Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six oh five P M. I'm going to ask, let's see who I can call on here. I'm going to ask our city manager to do the prayer and our city attorney to do the the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, if we can have everyone bow their heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for giving us the leadership and guidance to make today a better day. And that we appreciate your guidance in tonight's meeting. Thank you. Amen.
Let's all stand and face the nearest flag, place your right hand over your heart and follow along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you colleagues, thank you city attorney and city manager. So I'll be requesting that, Mr. City Clerk will call, please.
Good morning, Mayor, um, Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ray English.
Here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All council members and mayor are present.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson has a proclamation on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm not sure who's all logged in on behalf of Mosley family, but we did get a proclamation for Elizabeth Mosley. Uh, the city manager has that hard copy and it'd be available in his office. Uh, to be picked up tomorrow. I'm gonna go ahead and just read it as we um, present it to the, to the family. This is a proclamation honoring Elizabeth Mosley. Whereas Elizabeth Liz Mosley was one of the strongest women to ever walk the earth. And the Mosley family was very blessed to have her as the head of their family. And whereas Elizabeth graduated from San Diego State University in nineteen seventy-two with a degree in public administration. Elizabeth was the first black cheerleader in San Diego State after graduating. She went to pursue her master's degree in career in public administration. And whereas Elizabeth.
Uh, David, you just went muyude.
Sorry. Whereas Elizabeth, uh, whereas Elizabeth worked her way up to become Los Angeles South Branch Case Education Bureau Chief with the state of California. And whereas in nineteen seventy-eight, she met her husband Melvin. And moved to the city of Hawthorne and went on to have four children. Eventually, they would reside in Hawthorne for the rest of their lives. And whereas Mrs. Mosley was a wonderful, loving mother who gave her all to her family. And ended her thirty-plus years career in twenty-ten. After retiring, Liz poured herself into her community as a dedicated member of the Hawthorne Miracle Workers. And a local dance group made up of African-American women. She invented a few dances as part of the group. Elizabeth also became an avid traveler, visited China, Cuba, and numerous European countries. And whereas Elizabeth Mosley was an excellent mother, boss, wife, dancer, and fashionista. She was supportive, kind, hilarious, witty, and would be missed dearly. And therefore Hawthorne formally recognizes and takes great pride acknowledging Elizabeth Liz Mosley for her personal achievements, community contributions, and commitment to the city of Hawthorne. An eternal loving memory of her years of life, uh, dated the second of March twenty-twenty-two. So we just wanted to uh, take some time, and this is signed by the entire city council. Mayor Alex Vargas, Mayor Pro Tem David Patterson, Councilmember Olivia Valentine, Councilmember Alex Montero, and Councilmember uh, Angie Reyes English. Uh, collectively, we wanted to, you know, express our sympathies for your loss and help you to celebrate uh, the life of a loved one.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes, um, I want to express my sympathy to Liz's husband Mel. Um, they are longstanding members of the Holly Park Homeowners Association, of which I'm also a member. I've known her for many years, wonderful community leader and um, and dancer. And, and, and just an all-around really wonderful person and very giving to the community and very involved in making sure that people remained active. She was a, she was an avid, um, act, she was active in this, in, in physical activities. She believed in keeping people active and healthy. Um, my last memory of Liz was last year at the um, National Night Out when she was leading the dancing for everyone. Um, just a great community member and I'm really simp, I'm, I have great sympathy toward the family and my heart goes out to all of you and especially Mel because I know that uh, Mel, you and um, and your wife had a wonderful relationship and a wonderful marriage throughout all these years and God bless all of you.
Councilmember English?
Yes, thank you. To the Mosley family, my deepest condolences. Um, I've heard so much of the Mosley family, just in my time here in Hawthorne, but more importantly, the activities and the participation that your family has made in the community and contributions to the family, uh, to the children, grandchildren. Uh, Mr. Mosley, to all of you, my deepest condolences. Uh, I, I, I pray and I hope that uh, she is celebrating uh, along with us here, knowing that she was a bright light in all of our lives and in your lives most especially. But uh, thank you so much for sharing her and this opportunity to provide you with the resolution and support, not just of her, but knowing the work that she did here in our community in the city of Hawthorne. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, also my deepest sympathy to the family Mosley. Um, I did uh, met them before. I'm a honorary member of the Holly Park Homeowners Association. So um, I did met them um, you know, many, many years ago. And especially, you know, like I said, Melvin and the wife, you know, Elizabeth was such a kind heart. And have done a lot of for the community and Holly Park. And uh, as we celebrate the Women's History Month, so I think she is a, a perfect woman uh, to be recognized uh, because of she, her achievements. So my deepest empathy and uh, again, um, like Ms. Valentine said, you know, our heart goes because I, I was so kind to the community and dedicate your life to the community service. And for the uh, she was a wonderful old lady, so um, we're gonna miss her. And our heart goes with the family. And again, uh, she will be in our history books and maybe at the museum in Hawthorne because it's she did a lot for the community and for the education. So thank you very much.
Um, I'd like to express my condolences um, to the Mosley family, um, to Mr. Melvin Mosley. Um, I saw them together several times. And a couple of times at the Holly Park Homeowners Association meetings. But most recently, as Councilmember Valentine mentioned, was the National Night Out event. Where Mrs. Mosley led the line dancing in particular. So she led the line dancing, the electric slide and a cou- the, a couple of other shuffle dances that they have out there and uh, she's a fun lady, um, beloved by her family, um, close to Mr. Mosley, of course, Melvin. And uh, well, she'll be sorely missed by the community and we honor her today. And uh, uh, may she rest in peace. Ultimately, that's the most important part right now, so. My condolences and my deepest sympathy to the family. Okay, so I think uh, we're done, we're good. Thank you, Mr. uh, Mayor Pro Tem for bringing that up and present, reading that, okay? Do we have any members of the Mosley family that would like to say a few words? The Mosley family is listening, but uh, I think they may uh, be listening mostly, so thank you.
Hello, I'm sorry.
You there? Okay, yeah, thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Lakeisha. Um, I'm the oldest daughter. And I just wanted to thank you all for the wonderful comments that you um, had to share about my mom. She was a wonderful person and I'm glad that you guys recognized her um, for her efforts and trying to better the community. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any, is there anybody else there with you that would like to say anything? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much and uh, we honor your mother. So the next item we have on this presentation is a presentation by City Attorney Robert Kim. Um, I requested at one of our previous meetings that a presentation, a brief presentation, of course, be made on California Proposition sixty-four and Hawthorne Measure C C. So that the community can hear the details as to what those propositions meant related to cannabis. And what they are and what they are not. So I think uh, there might be some misinformation, some true information that's out there, but some uh, uh, maybe misunderstanding. So I think uh, this is an opportunity for our community members to hear some details. Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me share the screen. Can y'all see the screen? Can you see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so as the mayor just stated, um, this presentation is on California Proposition sixty-four and Measure C C. Uh, the presentation will also cover uh, where we're at in terms of the cannabis program. And what to um, also see ahead um, in terms of the ordinance and whatnot. So California Proposition sixty-four was, was passed by the voters in twenty-sixteen and became effective in twenty-seventeen. But the statutory scheme for legalized cannabis uh, became in effect in twenty-eighteen when the state legislatures passed the Medical and Adult Use of Cannabis Regulations and Safety Act. Um, Proposition sixty-four also decriminalized possession and recreational use of cannabis and allowed individuals to grow up to six plants at home as long as it's not visible from the public. Uh, but this presentation will emphasize more on the, the cannabis retail business. The, the statutory scheme of the state created a Department of Cannabis Control. And similar to alcoholic beverage control for alcohol, Department of Cannabis Control regulates the commercial cannabis industry in the state. Through the statutory scheme of this, of the state, um, there is some twenty types of different licenses that includes both uh, commercial cannabis program and medicinal use program. So some of the licenses that we've already discussed during the council meeting is licensed for such things as cultivation, manufacturing, testing, retail distributorship, and micro-business. So in terms of what does the statute require in, in terms of retail license, they, you must have a physical location. The location need not be open to the public if it's exclusively to sell delivery of cannabis. Um, the retail business cannot be located within six hundred feet radius of a K through twelve school or daycare center. Local jurisdiction and cities may specify a different radius as long as it's greater than six hundred feet. Cannabis product packaging is also uh, regulated and it must be labeled, must be tamper-proof, must be child-resistant, and they're a universal symbol. And it cannot be made to be attractive to, to kids. Similar to uh, laws relating to alcohol that it cannot, you cannot sell or you cannot permit under twenty-one to be on the premise. You may not employ anyone under twenty-one years of age, and ID must be checked at entry of cannabis retail shops. For M license, that's for medicinal, eighteen and over are allowed if they show a medicinal authorization from a medical doctor. Advertising is also regulated and that it must not advertise or market within one thousand feet of K through twelve school or a daycare center. You must not encourage under twenty-one to consume cannabis. Retailers are not allowed to advertise on billboards on interstate highways. There are strict requirements in terms of, in terms of record-keeping. The, the retail stores must, must report each sale, including name and addresses of the customers. It must be kept on the retail premises and must be retained for seven years. Records are subject to inspection by Department, Department of Cannabis Control, other state and local agency as well. Violation is subject to a, a fine of thirty thousand dollars and you can, and the stores cannot dispose that information to a third party. What are local agencies allowed to do? Local agencies, including cities, are allowed to adopt and enforce local ordinance and regulate regarding cannabis. Local zoning and land use may also be applied. Business license may also be required under the ordinance. Ordinance on secondhand smoke, like the one we passed a couple of months back, it can also be applied to cannabis as well. You may prohibit some or all cannabis license currently as we stayed in the city. Um, the cannabis, cannabis is prohibited. Cultivation license must follow state and local values laws and requires environmental impact analysis. Um, the local agencies must also notify Department Cannabis Control when a license has been invoked. They establish standards for health, safety, environmental protection, testing, security, food safety, and work protection in addition to the department standard uh, with the state laws. Um, local agencies must provide a copy of ordinance relating to commercial cannabis to the department. You must provide names and contact information to Department of Cannabis Control. The statutory provisions are codified in Division ten of the Business and Professions Code, Section twenty-six thousand H S A. Now, how did the city get to the state that we're in now? Back in January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, by a vote of five to zero, city council approved Resolution number eighty-one forty-eight that placed a measure on November third, twenty-twenty statewide election called Measure C C. That imposed a five percent cannabis business tax on the gross receipts of cannabis business. Measure C C ballot title was, Shall the City of Hawthorne Cannabis Business Tax Ordinance of Twenty-Twenty Be Approved, Imposing a Five Percent Cannabis Business Tax On the Gross Receipts of Cannabis Businesses Until Ended By Voters? This tax will generate no revenue initially, but would generate revenue if in the future cannabis businesses are permitted or exist in the city. Now, the yes vote for Measure C C totaled eighteen thousand three hundred and four votes. Of, which is, which constituted about sixty-one point fifty percent of the votes. No vote was eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-four, or about thirty-eight point fifty percent of the vote of the residents. Now, what did the council uh, direct after passage of Measure C C? Starting from January of twenty-twenty-one, council directed staff to request for proposal for consultants on cannabis program. And also directed staff to look into zoning and ordinance for commercial cannabis. Then we also had a study session in which a consultant uh, told, stated that the cannabis business, I guess she had consulted before, and the cannabis business in terms of revenue for the cities are increasing on a yearly basis. And that city can expect about hundred thousand to three hundred thousand per store for about, and she studied mainly retail business, it for about eight to twelve retail stores in City of Hawthorne. So if you had an average of, let's say, we had ten retail stores in City of Hawthorne. According to the consultant, they expect the total revenue per year would be about one million to three million per year. On February twenty-third, a draft RFP for the consultant was provided to city council. In May twelfth, five cannabis consultants uh, were interviewed by city council members. In August twenty-fourth, ESMF Planning and Development, Inc., was selected by, by the council as city's cannabis consultant. On September twenty-eighth, city council approved to form a working committee. On October twelfth, Resolution number eighty-three oh five, creating the cannabis working committee, including the bylaws, was approved by city council. So that's, that's what we have. We have the working committee that's formed. And we're, we're given, uh, directed by council to look into creating ordinance. And all that's included in coming up with a recommended ordinance. What, what can we expect to see ahead? Um, ordinance with all licensed council voted to be looked at. So those are licenses that, that came before council. Uh, we were to look at uh, manufacturing, cultivation, uh, retail, delivery, testing, and lounge. Those were, were all to be looked at by council, not necessarily to be adopted. So, but what the cannabis consultant and the working committee will do is we will draft a recommended ordinance that includes every one of those licenses for, uh, for the uh, for the first reading for the public, for, and a public hearing for city council. At that first reading, um, the city council can select the types of license, if any, to, for the ordinance to be drafted. Then we will have another first reading because there will be, uh, it will be amended. And so we'll go with the types of license that the council selects. And that will be introduced at first reading of the ordinance to be adopted. Then we'll, of course, have a second reading for adoption. And council can always reject the, the recommended ordinance. By a vote, if council rejects, then we'll stay in the state of laws that we have right now, which is a prohibition of cannabis retail business in the city. What can we uh, expect in, in additional steps? If the council recommends, or they vote for certain types of cannabis retail business, um, then we will also form a oversight committee that may be done before the ordinance is recommended. We're, we're, the working committee will work on that. Um, the oversight, purpose of the oversight committee is to make sure that all proper guidelines are being followed. And there is no improper activity going on with the, with the ordinance and the licensing of the, of the uh, the cannabis business. Then we'll form the, the licensing committee, which will be by approval of the city council for a licensing committee to recommend certain applicants to be issued license, which will also go to the city council and ultimately, city council will by a vote, will have the final say on who is issued the license for the cannabis business. And that is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Uh, Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Robert King, for the presentation, very clear. The only thing that I want you to mention is that the uh, when we interviewed the, the the candidate for the consultant, it was done in public. We did a study session. And, and the process went to uh, different meetings. So we didn't do it in one meeting. So can you explain how we did that?
Yeah, so it was i- initially, I don't recall, I, this is something that was initiated before my appointment. I, I had to track back and there were um, more than five candidates that submitted application for the RFP process. I think initially, uh, it was cut down to five top candidates interviewed. Then we had another meeting in which uh, I, I believe top three came down, came down to top three. And that is some kind of point system. There was some tie. I, I, I don't remember the exact details. There was a tie among the top four. Eventually, it was reduced and then finally, uh, ESMF was selected as the final consultant.
Yeah, uh, thank you for that because, yeah, I just want people to understand because the, the RFP was received by the staff on the planning department. And then was given. And then was given to us uh, to read and then to come up with five for, for the final. Uh, for the interview. And then we create the interview panel. And then we interview each candid, which consultants. And then we, we set up a score. And then uh, we decide to come up with three of the top. From the top five, and then it was another meeting and there was another vote. And we went on and on and on. So it was all transparency, all that was done in public. So nothing was done in a closed session. Everything was done in a study session. That was a special meeting. Uh, that we did and I think it was like uh, maybe with four, the four meetings that we had. So just a, just a fair fight for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes English?
You're muted.
Thank you. And if I could remember just to add to that uh correctly, I believe there was eight in total applicants. Eight, five, and then ultimately three. Um, so, yes, there was more than five, however. Um, I'm just wanting to understand uh, where we're at with the presentation. Was this to provide, uh, Mr. Kim? Further clarification? Was it to provide an educational component to already um. What we're doing in the community with regards to the outreach meetings that we're already currently having? Uh, or is it just basically to just again iterate? The transparency and the processes in which we're taking to bring a cannabis program? So I just, I just want to understand uh, the presentation itself. And if we're gonna continue. With these types of presentations, you know, we need to make, we need to put it on the website so that folks can pull it up and look at it. Um, and then, you know, you could always um, pro- provide if there's like, uh, for instance, um. Something that could be printed or something that could be downloaded. Uh, if folks want to do that, they could do that too. But um, it was a good presentation. It was very factual and clear. So, thank you for that. And uh, just to piggyback, uh, piggyback on that, there's two additional outreach meetings that the committee will be hosting. That we have uh. To do, and that's on the March twelfth and March thirtieth. So again, those are posted on the website too. But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman English. And, and let me, uh, because Councilwoman English is the chair of the working committee. She's been at every town hall meeting. And I just want to say, during the town hall meetings, the consultants did a more comprehensive uh, presentation. Of all the laws involved with the state uh, with respect to cannabis regulations. So during the town hall meetings. Uh, there is a, an attorney for the cannabis consultants that does the similar type of presentation about the laws.
I just wanted to highlight um, that I personally requested this uh, presentation. During one of our previous council meetings, to uh, inform the residents as to what the laws were. Um, people were quoting some of the laws, Proposition sixty-four and Measure C C. Some of them, some information was correct, but some information uh, was not uh, well understood. So I asked him to do this as an educational uh, component. On behalf of the City Council and uh, also for the transparency too, just so that we can have this on record. So I'm just gonna ask the, the ci- uh, the city attorney and. Uh, the city manager, just to simply get this into PDF format and just add it to the, the links that are on our homepage so that people can access it. Like some of my councilmember colleagues already mentioned.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just to uh, reiterate that the, all the cannabis workshop is on uh, YouTube. And has been, is rotated by our cable. So it is there for the public to review many, many times.
Exactly. And uh, if people have a, have ideas or concerns, they could express them here at the council meeting. At those workshops. Um, I don't know if the ad hoc committees have like, uh, public co- commentary, but. You, you're free to make your comments at any time that you wish, at the appropriate times. Mister Clerk, thank you, Mister City Attorney. Mister Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Yes, Mister Mayor, uh, pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three. Our remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body should have the discretion at the close of oral communications. To refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation.
Any communications?
Yes, Mister Mayor, we receive uh, no emails regarding public comments for tonight's agenda. We have four speakers tonight for oral communications.
Okay, let's go to each one.
Okay. Diana has the first speaker.
Oh, and uh, Mister City Clerk? Let's just pay a special care that um. Special care that uh, when uh, somebody's calling a caller to line them up for com- for a comment. Just to make sure that that uh, either you or Diana are muted at that.
Yeah, we address that.
Okay, hello? Uh, our first speaker is Mister Vergara. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Um, I'm speaking tonight uh, to finish my question for the town hall meeting on February twenty-sixth. The City Council's direction on cannabis retail is misguided. Not only did they delay the registration process. But you guys did a horrible job in getting the word out. The registration process was nothing more than a barrier to allow North Hawthorne residents. To speak about the opinions on cannabis, uh, and the negative impact on our children. Uh, we are aware that cannabis lobby is pushing this because there is big and significant campaign money involved in local officials to bring cannabis to the city. So we are aware of this invisible driving force, which is money. And, and, and it's money the reason why the City Council waived the planning commission meeting for a local hotel developer six months ago. To spare him the time and the expense of going through the process the correct way. Who receives an extra chunk of campaign money or hefty donations to their nonprofit? Boy, do I miss Mister Shedbear, who had a vision for Hawthorne that included quality businesses that raised real revenue for the city. Again, I ask, the residents have not seen or heard the consultant's justification. For her six hundred thousand do- six hundred thousand dollar fee that is being funded by taxpayer money. We've only heard conclusive statements that the revenue from cannabis applications will reimburse the city for a six hundred thousand dollar liability. No explanation on how many years that will take while the consultants pocket the money, pay campaign contributions and run off. To their posh homes and ranch or cook among them. Instead, three council members are wasting our tax dollars on, on profits, clothes and secrecy and censure. They officially seek community input on cannabis businesses, but they have their own agenda. Furthermore, who are the two City Council members who originally negotiated the contract with E J M A's Planning and Development Team? Please describe the process that you plan to use in Hawthorne. Uh, um, right now you appear to be soliciting uh, uh, comments from the community. What is the purpose of soliciting these comments? Are you trying to ascertain how many cannabis retail shops you, you uh, propose for Hawthorne? If the community does not want cannabis retail in the city, does your assignment with the city come to a conclusion? Your contract with the city requires that you draft a zoning and a zone text amendment to the Hawthorne Municipal Code. The H and C presently prohibits marijuana retail establishments in the city. Who made the decision to recommend hiring?
Eighteen seconds.
Consent calendar. My last comment tonight is whether we're gonna be a general law city or a charter city. Uh, then, then look at the city of Valley, did this ten years ago, and they gave themselves a hefty uh, pay rate. Um, you know.
Your kindness app, sir.
Six hundred months to five thousand dollars.
Sir, your kindness app.
Yeah, that's not fair.
Thank you.
Mister, uh, to the mayor and to the poll, uh, can we ask the uh, the particip- the ca- the caller to give then full name and address please?
Mister City Attorney, is that okay?
Um, we can't require that. Uh, we, we certainly have a policy that they should, but uh, it, it, that cannot be required.
Okay, go, go, go ahead with the next uh, caller.
Okay. Next, we have uh, Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Fernandez, you have three minutes.
Oh, yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Lili Fernandez, Hawthorne resident. Um, coming up here to the board again, um, repeatedly regards to the auto shops taking over the parking in the residential area. With their customer cars. As stated before, the cars are not moved for a week. The auto shop workers come during the street sweeping day, move them, put them right back for another seven days. This I have seen happen for several years, from Hawthorne Avenue to Inglewood Avenue, from the one oh five Free with Dells. To Beerin, Imperial to one hundred and eighteen. Up and down those streets, these shops have at the very least three to five cars on a single block. I can imagine other auto shops do the same thing in the other areas of Hawthorne. I don't come up here to whine or just to let you know what I feel. I come up here for resolution and for you to do something about it. That's what you're there for. For, to help the community, make it easier on us. It's not the first time I speak on this. Not one of you up there have taken your time to reach out on this matter. This parking issue affects many Hawthorne residents. We are frustrated. Something needs to be done and can be done. Start with something simple. After having parking enforcement tag cars for seventy-two hours. Parking, citing cars blocked in the driveway at these auto shop locations, run the plates, half of them aren't registered. Some cars I've seen have old yellow parking tickets. Some cars are dirty and abandoned looking, or no front license plate. There's cars parked on the cul-de-sac, no parking any time, no certification is given. Don't wait for a call. Patrol the area. There's no consistency with this. And it's obvious these type of businesses are taking advantage not of the city, but of the residents. This doesn't include the overflow parking of apartment buildings. With this so-called housing element, we now have the RFK owner putting a bid for six hundred chicken coop units? It makes no sense. But now, it makes sense why he held on to this abandoned hospital since two thousand four and didn't sell. I'm sure there are others just like him, but this is another matter that hasn't been taken care of. Please listen and please reach out and do something for us residents. We voted you in. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You have a good night. Diana has the next speaker?
Okay, Ms. Williams, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, the city neighbors of Hawthorne, LaSalle Williams here. I would like to start off by saying Happy Women's Day. It's Women's Day for everyone here, all around the world. Especially for the women in the city of Ukraine, of what they're going through and the hardship that they going through. And I want to say Happy Women's Day to the women in Ukraine. And I would like to give two thumbs up for the woman that uh, right here in our wonderful city of Hawthorne, that's on the ballot for. Assemblywoman, that is such a great step uh, above from the local level. Kudos to you and you're gonna be the assemblywoman, so no worries. And I would like to say too, this cannabis situation, the city of Hawthorne is stuck on this agenda. It has been going down the road like tumbleweed. And the weed is so big, you could just blaze it up and drive by and get a contact and, and have a good night's sleep. And the next morning, open up some cannabis shop, which have all, should have been already opened up. Right here in our wonderful city. We, we're just stuck on too many agendas. Going out paying so much tax dollars, money on getting consultant, everything that's brought to our city. We need a consultant. When is the simplicity gonna have a breakthrough? Our, our, our community deserves this. Even the sign in the middle of the road on El Segundo and Hawthorne Boulevard. This steel pole, we have asked for a good community sign with life and action. Our community deserve that. We have the monies for that. Come on. Let's stop getting stuck on agendas and hiring these expensive consulting firms. We don't need it. Can we please be a part of the twenty-first century? Hawthorne is a wonderful community, a wonderful community. Even our housing department have implemented an online service for the people in the city of Hawthorne. Which is called Assistant Connect. Kudos to our housing department. You could go on there, on that line and update your profile. You could go on that line and see what listings there is for rent here in this wonderful city of Hawthorne. Because the COVID has stopped a lot of in-person meetings and everything to upload, upload your profile. That is a wonderful twenty-first century tool. Can we please? Go ahead, open up these cannabis shops. Everything have been implemented. Mister Robert Kim just gave fresh guidelines. This stuff has been going on since way past January twenty-twenty-one. Come on, Hawthorne. Let's keep the hope and come up to the twenty-first century. LaSalle Williams, which is everyone, all the women out there are wonderful, wonderful. Happy Women's Day. Thank you for my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next speaker?
Okay, the next speaker, we have uh, Ms. Suarez. Ms. Suarez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Bernadette Flores. I'm a councilwoman from the city of Lawndale. Last meeting, I was unable to attend due to a conflicting council meeting. So although it is not agendized for discussion this evening. I wanted to, to voice my support for the Centennial Youth Services nonprofit organization. Along with Councilwoman Valentine, I also serve on the board for this nonprofit. I think this nonprofit provides an essential service for your community as well as my own, and the work speaks for itself. I think Councilwoman Valentine hit it on the nose when she mentioned that this organization has already been providing essential services. To the city of Hawthorne. We're just asking for Hawthorne to recommit to the organization as they had in the past. I know as elected officials, we have a fiduciary responsibility to oversee taxpayer dollar funds and to make sure they're being spent correctly. I look at Centennial Youth Services as an investment for the future of our youth. The organization has been around for quite some time and it's provided much-needed support for communities like ours. To help put our youth in the right direction. And furthermore, Centennial Youth Services already has proven a successful track record. I would ask that your council agendize this request for a future meeting. And are hopefully able to see the benefits of adding your support to helping our at-risk youth. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Suarez. You have a good night.
You too.
It helps?
No, that is the end of public comments. We just need to wait thirty seconds.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
That's thirty seconds.
Thank you very much. Okay. I declare oral communication close order. Mister Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, please?
Um, yes. Mister Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. Our items seven, eight, thirteen and fourteen for your consideration and approval. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinance on tonight's agenda. Item eight, City Treasurer's request for approval of the warrants. Item thirteen, Resolution number eight three four zero. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, reratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency. By Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty-twenty, and reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the City Council. Commissions and committees of the City of Hawthorne for the thirty-day period beginning March eighth, twenty-twenty-two, through April seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Pursuant, pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act and Assembly Bill number three six one. Item fourteen, Resolution number eight three four one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. Designating council member representatives to various organizations for adoption.
They make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vardis?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mister Mayor.
So today we, thank you. Today we have a bid. Uh, Mister Clerk, can you read item number ten, please?
Uh, yes, I can. Now is the time and place to declare publicly received bids for local street improvement project two thousand twenty-two. Project through two twenty, sorry, twenty-two through zero four. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There were seven bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bond. Bids were open on February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. The prices are as follows. Shawnen, five million ninety-five thousand and ten dollars. RJ Noble Company, four million four hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Sully Miller Contracting Company, five million one hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Hardy and Harper Inc., four million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. All American Asphalt, four million three hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy cents. Help Inc., DBA Excel Paving, four million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Sequel Contractors Inc., four million ninety-eight thousand and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, I make a motion to be, uh, refer the bids to staff for study and recommendation.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mister Mayor.
Um, but we do have a, a, a second bid, item number eleven. That's the second bid. Go ahead.
Now is the time and place to declare publicly received some bids for park maintenance services, project twenty-two zero one. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There were three bids received. Bidders' bonds were not required. Bids were open on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The prices are as follows. Parkwood Landscape, three hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Martinez Landscape Co. Inc., three hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Mariposa Landscapes Inc., three hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and twenty, thirty-one dollars and fifty cents.
I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Uh, we have a public hearing, which is item number sixteen. Mister Clerk, read that, please.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing to approve resolution number eight three four two. A negative declaration for housing, safety, and environmental justice elements. And adopting the sixth cycle, two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-nine housing element. Approve resolution eight three four three, adopting two thousand twenty-two revised. Safety element and approving resolution eight three four four, adopting the environmental justice element of the general plan. Planning Department's Declaration of Publication filed, no written communications were received.
Um, is there anyone who wants to speak on this topic? From the public?
Before we do that, uh, Mister Mayor?
Yeah, well.
We do have a presentation.
Well, the uh, the speakers are going to proceed the presentation. So is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on this item?
No, we have not received any comments.
The hearing is close ordered. Go ahead, uh, Mister McLean, I'm your speaker.
I would like to introduce uh, to you again, Mister Perry Banner from uh, our Consultants in Nova uh, Planning Group. And he will give the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, good evening, Mayor Vargas and members of the city council. I think I'm just going to share my screen and we'll get the uh, presentation started. There, can everyone see the presentation in front of you?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so what I think I'd like to do tonight, there's. You've obviously received the staff report, the housing element, the safety element, the environmental justice element. There's a lot there that needed to be absorbed. I think I'd like to sort of make the presentation as uh, efficient as possible and leave time for questions. So I'm going to attempt to do that, but uh, there is quite a bit that I think I need to get across to you. But uh, let me just say that it's excellent being here again with you tonight. If you recall, we, we saw each other in the fall when we held a couple of council study sessions. And uh, we're pleased that we're at a point where HCD has reviewed the documents and we're ready to resubmit to the state. Um, for certification. So as I said, we're in what we would call phase four. We're going through the public hearings right now. Uh, the next phase would be to um, send the document to the state upon adoption of the um, the housing element. And to provide just a little background as a refresher, recall that the housing element is that document that lays out the city's strategy for addressing housing. Over the um, the eight-year planning horizon, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-nine. And the overall project actually doesn't just include the housing element. It also included an update to the safety elements and the preparation of a new environmental justice element. So as far as your new housing element is concerned, it's broken down into two primary parts. The housing plan lays out the uh, goals, policies, and housing programs. And part two, the background report, was all that analysis that uh, that we had prepared, staff and the consultant team. To determine what the housing needs were for the city of Hawthorne and re, what resources were available. The uh, the housing plan includes twenty-three programs that will implement the city's housing strategy over the next eight years. And they're organized into these six topical areas, uh, making sure that there's adequate sites for a big cross-section of people in the city. That there's um, an attempt to remove uh, housing constraints, be they governmental or non-governmental. And um, and to um, address equal housing opportunities amongst others. The one thing that I would like to land on here for a moment with regard to the uh, the background report is this. It wasn't necessarily a new topic that was addressed in this cycle of the housing elements. But it was uh, a much more robust analysis of affirmatively furthering fair housing was required. And what that really entails is identifying if there were any se, um, uh, patterns or trends. Related to segregation and discrimination with regard to housing in the city. And then determine methods and housing programs to help combat that, just to make sure that the ha, the city of Hawthorne is a more inclusive community. So there's a full chapter that's dedicated to that in this um, cycle of the housing element. So here I think is the, the, the part that city council will most likely be interested in. And that's how the city goes about addressing its arena allocation. And I know that when we met during those council study sessions, this is really where the uh, the council was, was interested. And if you recall, the city's regional housing needs allocation for this upcoming planning period. Uh, was a total of one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four units, which. And not unlike any other jurisdiction in Southern California, Hawthorne received arena for this cycle. That was three to four times larger than what it had received in the past couple of cycles. And that was, like I say, across the board. That was the case for all jurisdictions. And that arena number, of course, is broken down into different income levels. So we can't just provide housing for um, market rate homes. We also need to make sure that we can provide housing for um, lower-income households. And what we need to do with the housing el, elements is demonstrate that there's enough land in the city to accommodate that arena number. And also land use policies and zoning to make that happen. But what I want to reiterate is, as far as from the city's perspective, this is not an obligation to construct this housing. The markets, the free market will ultimately take care of that. We just need to sort of set the table to make sure that um, that this can occur. So how do we go about doing that? Well, if you recall, the first thing that we're able to do is to take credit for projects that are in the pipeline. Projects that might be under construction during this period. So Millennium at South Bay, for example, was a project that we're able to credit towards our arena numbers. From there, we can also take into account um, the projection for accessory dwelling units over the course of the next eight years. And then ultimately determine, well, what is the gap now? What do we need to, um, what, what is the number to close the um. Between our credits and our, and arena, and how do we close that? And we'll go about that by looking at potential sites, vacant and underutilized sites throughout the city, and then determine if there's enough capacity there. So as I mentioned, we had this large arena number, but once we start to um. Take away the um, the, our, 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 you know, our credits. And take away the projected ADUs, that number starts to shrink, as you can see. So we're left with a much smaller number than we originally started with. Because of things that the ci, that things that are going on in the city, projects that are in the pipeline, projects that have been constructed. But the one thing that I would like to point out is, is on that bottom line, the remaining arena. You'll see that a large portion of a remaining arena is in those lower-income categories. And so those are the numbers that's uh, that four hundred plus that I'd like you to remember, because it's going to be important. Uh, in, in the, the strategy for how do we address that. So, the housing element has a four-part plan for meeting the arena. And the first part is by looking at all the existing vacant and underutilized residential and mixed-use sites. Things that we don't have to do, sites that we don't have to do anything with, because the zoning is already in place to allow residential development. But as a built-out city, and for those, you know, your residents, you're aware that there isn't much of those sites that are available. So we have to look at other things. And if you recall, uh, part two of that plan was going to be to do a small increase in the permitted density. In the downtown Hawthorne specific plan, mixed-use district. Um, which I'll get to. And the two other parts of our, our, of our plan is a new housing overlay. And something that's um, is the result of HCD's initial review of our housing element. A fourth part to our plan is to rezone certain properties that are zoned M-one to R-three. And then when we look at these sites, what's different with this uh, particular housing element cycle. Is that the Department of Housing and Community Development are taking a very finely-grained review. Of, of the sites to ensure that they actually have redevelopment potential over the course of the next eight years. And we really needed to justify these sites by demonstrating that there was um, property owner interest in redeveloping the site. That the site was uh, underutilized, that there was essentially, like I say, a potential for these sites to redevelop. So there was a number of criteria that we used when we um, analyzed the sites. So starting with the first part of that plan, when we looked at the existing vacant and underutilized sites. We found that we had a total capacity of, of a hundred and sixty-four units. So we, it gets us a little bit to where we need to go, but obviously not, not across the finish line. And those sites, the ones that are existing currently right now, they might be a um, a site that has a single-family dwelling on it. But that is zoned uh, for a more intensive use, so a site that could be redeveloped, but without having to rezone at all. The second part of our plan, as I mentioned, was to make a small increase in density. And we're going to go from what the uh, downtown Hawthorne specific plan currently allows. Which is twenty-four dwelling units per acre in the mixed-use district, and increasing it to thirty dwelling units per acre. Now, the reason for that is two parts. When it comes to developing affordable housing, HCD has a threshold. Um, for what's uh, you know, what kind of density an affordable housing project requires. In order for it to make financial sense. And that threshold number is thirty dwelling units per acre. So right now, if we didn't do anything in the downtown Hawthorne specific plan, we might still be able to develop housing. In the downtown Hawthorne specific plan area, but we would not be able to count those units towards our lower-income arena. So it was important for us to make that adjustment to thirty dwelling units per acre. And the other, the other bonus was that we were actually able to develop more sites as a result. And what we found was that by making that change, we have a capacity in that downtown Hawthorne specific plan of eight hundred and seven units. Quite a bit. A large portion of those, of course, coming from the um, uh, the Hawthorne Mall site. So now getting into the, the third and fourth parts of our, of our plan. Um, third part would be a housing overlay. Uh, the housing overlay, when we were trying to find sites throughout the city that could fall under this housing, housing overlay. We were instructed by the city council to make sure that they weren't concentrated, to look around. And so we did that. We looked at sites, they're primarily along the uh, the, the major corridors, along El Segundo, along Inglewood. Along Prairie. But we looked at um, sites throughout the city that uh, an overlay could be applied to. And what the housing overlay does is you would have your existing zoning. Typically, that existing zoning is for a commercial use or a mixed use. But when you apply the housing overlay on top, the property owner would be able to develop at the. At the, at the underlying zoning, the commercial, um, the commercial uses, or they could develop residential uses. So the housing overlay helped us to get across to that um, that magic number that we need to accommodate our arena. So here's why I want to pause for a second, and I want the city council to remember that remaining arena that we had and that large portion. That, that four hundred-plus units that still needed to be accommodated. And that were for lower-income uh, arena, very low and low-income households. When we submitted the document to the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they provided us with a response letter. The one thing that they pointed out was that there is a section of government code that requires the city. It states that's um, there's a requirement that at least fifty percent of that lower-income housing need. So at least fifty percent of those four hundred units, so two hundred plus, must be accommodated on sites that are designated for residential use only. Or sites that are zoned mixed-use, but where you could develop residential uses on the ground floor. And essentially develop as residential only. So those, those sites in the mixed-use district of the downtown Hawthorne specific plan, for example. They don't meet that uh, that requirement. And the housing overlay sites, they didn't meet that requirement also. So it, so what staff needed to do was to, to look again, to find other properties in the city. That could help us meet this requirement of government code. And so the solution that we came up with. Is the, the recommendation for rezoning of certain M-one properties that are in the southeast corner of the city. Rezoning them from M-one, limited industrial, to R-three, high-density residential. And what that will do, it'll get us across the finish line. So with the housing overlay sites, and those properties that get rezoned from M-one to R-three. We have another capacity for seven hundred and twelve units that can be developed at thirty dwelling units per acre. It can be developed for lower-income housing. So where does that put us? So on this chart here, and I'm just going to have you look at the, the bottom two lines, the total capacity. You can see that um. With all the, with this, this four-part housing program that we have, we will actually be in excess of what arena requires. We'll be able to, we have the capacity for two thousand-plus units. And this is good, because as I mentioned, um, HCD is taking a, a very close look at these sites. Not every one of these sites might be acceptable to the, to HCD. So when we resubmit this document to HCD. We want to make sure that we've got a nice surplus, a little bit of buffer to work with, in the event. That's uh, certain sites start to get crossed off of our sites inventory. So at this point right now, we're in a pretty good spot, and uh, there's, there's lots of room for um, the city to accommodate its arena. And this map here shows the um, the city council, just how the sites are distributed throughout the city. Um, there is a, a good distribution of sites, as you can see. Uh, yes, in, in, in some cases, they are concentrated along major corridors. But when it comes to the providing um, affordable housing, that's a good thing, because you want to make sure that these sites are close to um, public transit. And just to demonstrate some of the uh, opportunity sites that we have. Uh, the Hawth, Hawthorne Nursery, for example, is listed as an opportunity site. And that's one where the uh, property owner has actually expressed interest in redeveloping. And another vacant site on, on Yukon. Before I end, the first part of this presentation, because I need to speak about the safety element and the environmental justice element just a little bit too. Um, the one thing that I want to point out is, the staff report, report had already gone out. And uh, and of course, the other resolution. Uh, what we've seen from um, from, from the consultant side of things is that. When jurisdictions are resubmitting their uh, housing elements to HCD, and this would be for the second submission to HCD. They're still getting comments back. And HCD, again, taking a really close look at some of these sites. So our, my recommendation tonight is that we add this recital. And this recital is uh, essentially to, to help bolster. Um, the uh, the, the resolution, the adopting resolution. And this, to demonstrate that, yes, look, these, these sites that we've looked at, they've been analyzed, they have development potential. And um, and we're including them as a recital in the, in the resolution as a result. The second amendment that I would like to recommend, and, and by the way, um, we have run this by uh, the city attorney as well. But if HCD does come back. this by the city attorney as well, but if HCD does come back and tell us that we need to make some minor modifications to the housing element after council has adopted it, we'd like to maybe include this finding, which just essentially goes on to say that if there are minor modifications that are required, then we'll be able to make those minor modifications without coming, having to come back to do a readoption. So there's some language there that the city attorney has seen as well. I'm not sure if the city council would like me to just move forward. I've got about six more slides for the safety element and environmental justice element, or we could pause there and talk about the housing element.
Gary, can you come back one slide?
Yes, I can.
We're asking that when, when that, when that resolution comes up, that these be added to the, to the, to the motion. But also, you'll notice at the bottom of this one, it has a bunch of x's for the dollar amount. That would need to be specified as well. We didn't want to presume what that should be, so the maker of the motion would submit a dollar amount. I recommend whatever the city manager's threshold is would be an appropriate dollar amount, but we left that for the discretion of the city council as well.
Thank you, Greg. As I mentioned, I can either pause here, or I can just wrap up the presentation, and we can go directly to questions. I think I only have about six more slides.
I, I want to hear more about the environmental justice component.
Perfect. Great. So again, as I mentioned, this larger project included an update to the safety element in the preparation of a new environmental justice element. Just a little background first on the safety element. The safety element is already, of course, an existing element in the, in the general plan. The environmental justice element will be a new element that will be part, become part of your general plan. Those public review drafts were available on the city's website throughout this process. The, this, I'm just going to get right into what we did with the safety element. The safety element update was actually a very targeted update. Unlike the housing element update, which was sweeping, the safety element update only focused on three areas. It focused on emergency operations as they related to evacuation routes, they focused on fire prevention, and they focused on climate change and resiliency planning. So the, the amendments that were in the safety element, which were all identified in the, the staff report and, and the safety elements, were, like I say, very targeted. With regard to fire prevention, for example, because of certain, you know, new state law, we had to make these amendments to the safety element, didn't really apply to the city of Hawthorne. The state law was really focused on areas that were prone to wildfire, and of course, as a, as an urban city, that really doesn't, it really doesn't affect the city. However, we did look at evacuation routes, and we did make some amendments as are related to resiliency planning. So as far as the safety element is concerned, there were, all the existing goals and policies were maintained. We added new references to city and county plans, and we made new policies related to emergency preparedness, fire hazards, climate change and resiliency, and we added language related to evacuation routes. And finally, with regard to the new environmental justice element. So let me just begin by kind of defining, and what is the reason that we're here. And broadly speaking, what environmental justice relates to, it's this, this idea that every resident in the city should have an opportunity to live in a healthy, safe, clean environment. But what I think we know is that historically, certain communities have been exposed to, to greater environmental impacts. And what environmental justice does, or what the element does, is first identify any of these, what we would call disadvantaged communities. And those disadvantaged communities are, they're classified as being lower-income communities that are disproportionate, have been historically disproportionately affected by environmental pollutions and other hazards. And we want to identify those, and then create policies and programs to help level the playing field, if you will. And so the first thing that we had to do in this process was doing an analysis of the, the census districts and identify if there were these disadvantaged communities in Hawthorne. And what we found was as of the 21 census tracts that were in the city, 19 of those census tracts were actually classified as disadvantaged communities. So the, there's a white paper, that's all that background analysis, that was included as part of the environmental justice element. It's attached as an appendix to that, environmental justice element, if you ever want to have a, a broader look at things. And then what the environmental justice element does, it has, again, goals, policies and programs that address these elements of environmental justice, pollution exposure and air quality, access to public facilities, healthy food access, et cetera. And with regard to the, to the process of preparing this, like I say, we, first, we incorporated all the existing related policies from all the other elements in your general plan. We prepared the environmental justice white paper. We conducted some public outreach, and in fact, with regard to environmental justice, we actually had a focus group meeting that lasted about 60 minutes with some residents. And then we added new policies reflecting the findings. And I think with that, I can end the presentation, and we can start to answer questions.
Any questions from the staff, from the city council? Council member English, go ahead.
Mr. Banner, thank you so much for the presentation. And I do have a, a couple of comments. I want to start from the beginning, though, because I think that's important. I think the whole preservation and maintenance of our housing element is very important. Moreover, you made it very clear that it's the responsibility of the city council ultimately to assure that we have adequate housing to provide for all. All types of housing, all, all, all forms of, of, of affordability, correct? And I think at the end of the day, it's up to us to create that housing, and where would that be? And I think that's very important, because it comes back to the city council ultimately, having to make those decisions. And some of those decisions are not easy decisions, especially when, you know, you speak on, say, for instance, density, which a lot of folks are not favorable of. And then, again, you talk about, you know, still not having enough even to address the low income, which is a high number from what I saw in the RENA, that we're still lacking. I understand that affordability also includes being able to be a home buyer, whether it be a, a, a single dwelling, or, or a condo, et cetera, et cetera. But how do we get there with regards to the size of our city and the community itself? It, it truly is still trying to just get out of COVID and trying to pay their rents, and there's still a lot of disparities, if you will. So I, I like the way, the language that you put on goal three in, in the, in the outline. So there's that. And then you talked about here, just now, finishing the emergency, the emergency preparedness plans and evacuations. To be honest, I haven't seen that. I, I, I haven't, I haven't seen that. So I'm curious where that sat, so I could take a look at it, a look at that. And then, how were the, how, how is number 19 in your mapping that shows it identified as a disadvantaged community? How do we conclude that? How did we come to that conclusion on aviation when there's, in my opinion, expensive rental units there, condos, et cetera? And in other areas where I would have been focused at was, would be more to the, to the west, Imperial, and then maybe portions of Rosecrans as disadvantaged. And then how were the residents selected for your, for your survey or your community input? How was that done? So there's a little bit of that.
Okay. So there was, there was a lot there. So if I, if I've forgotten something, then, then you may have to remind me. But I think the first question that I heard was with regard to evacuation routes, okay? And so what I would point you in the direction of is the safety element. The safety element has what, a map of evacuation routes. And, and what I want to point out is, is first of all, what the states, what state law requires, and, and what precipitated this, really, is the wildfires that had occurred a couple of years ago. And in some of those towns where the wildfires occurred, there was only one access in and out of that community. And, and those communities paid quite heavily. And so what the, the law requires is that where there's a residential neighborhood, there needs to be at least two points of access and egress. Now, the, the thing with a, a city like Hawthorne in an urban area where you've got, you know, a street grid, there, there's, tends to be a lot of access. So there, as far as evacuation routes in the city of Hawthorne, every residential community in Hawthorne had at least two, and, you know, and more, points of access and egress in and out of those communities. So Hawthorne was safe in, in that regard. As far as the, the disadvantaged communities are concerned, and how did, how were those arrived at? So there's a, there's a mapping tool that was used, and it's a mapping tool that's available to, provided by the state. And what that mapping tool does is it looks at a number of variables that are related to the environment, to health, to economics, and it, it takes all those variables into account and does sort of a, a weighted measure, and, and you, we arrive at a, at a number for a census tract. And so those, that mapping tool that we used was how we determined that 19 out of the 21 census tracts crossed a threshold, and were identified as disadvantaged communities where there was a, a concentration of, of lower-income households and individuals, and that they were negatively impacted by, by some of these factors. So it, it wasn't a, a kind of, a, a random assessment. It was, it was actually a, a tool provided by the state to determine where these disadvantaged communities were. And the third question that I heard was with regard specifically to, I think you were, you were making reference specifically to the, to the focus group for the environmental justice elements. And what we did, we, we worked with staff, and I think that Director McLean received some input from members of staff and from others at the city as to who we might reach out to. And when we had a list, I think we had a list of perhaps nine or 10 people.
I can answer this, because I, I was, I was a big part of making that list, and I vetted it with others in the city, including some of my superiors here. We, we looked for a representative sample of people who could represent different segments of, of community that may be affected through, historically through, you know, these various factors that we're looking at, including poverty, or pollution, or anything like that. So what I, what I tried to do is I tried to find representatives from, say, people who, who talked or spoke on behalf of children, or spoke on behalf of different parts of the city, spoke on behalf of people who have particular difficulties such as wounded veterans. There was a pretty wide variety of people that, that we sent invitations to. We got a fairly good response. So I, I don't recall everyone that participated. We had a little bit fewer than promised to participate, but I'd be happy to put together the list and submit to the council so you can see. It was a, it was a pretty good representative list. But I don't know that all of them were, were residents, but they all were participants in the, in the community on a very, very active basis. So we had people who, you know, have, who worked with nonprofits in the city, and, and things like that. So it was designed not just to get random feedback, but to get very focused feedback.
So the feedback, I would, I would assume would be most important are residents that actually live here.
Yeah, we actually had, we, I deliberately reached out to people from different parts of the city, and we did have at least one resident, I recall, who spoke on behalf of residents in that area. But we have, I know that we had several residents on the committee, but they were also there to represent different advocacy groups that they traditionally advocated for.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at that list.
Yeah, I'll put that together. I'll have to dig back into my email, because this happened in the fall, but I'll, I'll put that together and send it over.
Yeah, thank you. But overall, I, I just think, I think it's, it's a, it's a good presentation. It's, it's a, it's very thorough. I wouldn't be opposed to amending some of the recommendations in, in language that needs to be included. That would help us along the way. So, but thank you so much for the presentation and additional information. And then everything is in here with regards to the emergency preparedness and the exits, evacuations, and things like that, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I would just say too, the, the, the focus group method of doing outreach, I've always found to be very effective. You have a, a small group. I think we had six of the nine people that we invited that participated in a phone call. And, and it was, it was somewhat of a free-flowing discussion. We, we provided a little bit of direction, but we mostly just wanted to hear from those representatives of the community. And it was, it was very effective.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just want to piggyback on what council member English mentioned. I know that you guys mentioned that you reached out to some members of the community, but you also reached out to people who are, run certain organizations here that might not live in the city. I would have, I want to see that list too. I want to look through it, review it, because I feel that a list like that should be weighted by members of the community, people who are going to be impacted by this. And not just select people who come here to the city council who might not live in the city, but run some type of nonprofit. I mean, they're running nonprofits because they're able to generate, work for themselves in helping the community if there is problem. So we have, I would weight it in terms of the members of the community that live here, because it's, it's imperative for them to improve their situation. So you have a different perspective, a different voice, a different communication from the residents that's going to be much different from those who, I don't want to say profit because they're nonprofits, but they, they are there to assist. Their existence depends on a community that has issues to be resolved.
I'm confident you'll be, you'll all be satisfied. The list is, is representative. I'm confident of that. But I'll send it to you soon.
Yeah, and, but that's why I'm, I'm just explaining why I feel that the residents should be weighted, just so that we can get their opinion.
Yep.
And that we're comfortable that that's, that has, that has been done. So let's, let's take a look at that on my behalf, and then I would like to maybe give some feedback. Go ahead. Council member Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Banner, and thank you, Greg McLean, for this extensive report. This is an amazing amount of work, and I, I, I do, I do appreciate the amount of effort it has taken you in order to produce this for us. And I thank you for that. I thank you for, for digging in and finding the, finding a surplus of, of, of places where, where we actually are overextended, so that we won't have to worry about not meeting our RENA needs. I wanted to ask you about the social, the environmental justice element, because everything I saw in here, the community engagement, the reducing pollution exposure, healthy food access, promoting access to public facilities, safe and sanitary homes, everything I saw in here are things which we are required to provide to all of our citizens, not just disadvantaged ones. So how is it? What is it that makes, that makes these disadvantaged members of the community different in a sense of what we're required to provide? I don't see anything different here. I don't see anything that we're not I don't see anything different here. I don't see anything that we're not required to provide to everyone.
Great, just bear bit, bear with me for, for one second and what I'd like to do is, is maybe um. Just point out some of the um, the goals and policies, for example, that might be in the environmental justice element. And what we, what we do is, you know, the, the thing that comes to the, to the top of my head is that um. One of these sort of subsections of the um, environmental justice element. Is how do we promote civic engagements? For uh, for residents that might live in some of these disadvantaged communities. Residents that might not otherwise be partaking in a city council meeting or a planning commission meeting. And so um, as far as the, the policies that are concerned. They, you know, there's one policy said, for example, that, that says that we'll specifically invite residents from traditionally underrepresented. Demographic groups to become board, commission and committee members as openings occur. So that's, that's one example of how, once we've identified where these disadvantaged communities are. How do we maybe start to direct resources there a little bit to s- to make it, to make things more equitable? You know, another thing, for example, might be with regard to the provision of public facilities, okay? So if we've identified that there is a um. A, a lack of parks, for example, in, in one area of the city. And a, a lack of parks in a, one of the disadvantaged communities. Well, maybe then, when the city is looking at its capital improvement plan uh, for the next five years. That that's where we might wanna start targeting some resources. And so that's maybe where we wanna uh, invest some money in uh, in capital improvements to, to provide. You know, public facilities of that sort. So you're, you're definitely right in the sense that the city is, is doing a lot of these things already. But I think with the environmental justice element is that it becomes a little bit more fo- focused. For where those resources could be allocated or where those e- efforts um, should be, should be made. Does that, does that help, Councilmember?
Thank you, yes.
You're welcome.
Hey, uh, let's see. Jump on check. Councilmember Montero?
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Banner and uh, Mr. McLean. The housing element, outstanding. Uh, I read it very good. Um, I like what you guys are proposing. But just to piggyback, uh, I'm gonna start with the environmental justice piece because Ms. Valentine was asking about the disadvantaged community. There is a map. On, on this environmental justice element. That show all the disadvantaged community in red. Basically, these people have this so-called low opportunities. Even when you, when you read, for example, we are low in um. Bachelor's degree, for example. People tends to go to community college instead of bachelor's degree. We are lowers at the uh, from the county. In Hawthorne. So not too many people are graduating from four-year college. A lot of people are not making enough money. People are paying. Forty-six to fifty-six percent of their income in, in, in rent. More than half what they make a month goes to rent. So when you look at that, nineteen out of twenty-one are considered disadvantaged community. So this environmental justice element, I would love for us to have a study session on it. Because it has detailed information of our entire city. Who are disadvantaged community, who are wealthy community? So we should study this document. Because this is the key to make policy to change our city for better future for all of us. And I would invite. Mr. Ruben Sanchez, Mr. Vergara, all those. Homeowners president to read this environmental justice. It's on our website. Please read it and then you'll see why us, the city council, especially Montero. Is advocating for more resources for Hawthorne, for more revenues for Hawthorne. Because we cannot afford to be. At the stage that we are at, at this present time. So read these environmental justice page by page. Because you will be educated in our economic situation in the city of Hawthorne. And you understand why restaurants don't wanna come to Hawthorne. Why we don't have Fleming or Houston or Trader Joe. So I will invite all those people that criticize us. That come here. From Mr., from uh, Lisa Agala, from all those people that you know who do you are. Read this report. Because this is an outstanding report. And it teaches a lot of things that we need to know. And I'll say, thank you very much because this was outstanding. And last uh, last week I participated on the counting. You know, the county has so-called city sustainability commitment. And they have ten goals. And those are all addressed in our environmental justice element. From equity and environment justice, energy, buildings, transportation, waste, water, mobility. Urban green space and tree canopy, climate releases, releasing and adoption, food equity. So all of this, I was happy to see that we one step ahead. So the county, not just the state, is doing those sustainability because sustainability is about equity. Are we providing equity service to our city? Are we deliver what we said we're going to deliver? But we cannot deliver if we don't have no money. If we don't have no, no income, no revenues coming to city of Hawthorne. We are only dependent on, on property tax, sales tax. And T O T tax. And what else we generate from? That's the key you have to think about it. But let me say that this housing element, I like the idea that you guys provide all the rezoning from M one to R three. From, from the overlay zoning, you know, so even to the thirty unit per acre. So I think those are good steps. And, and, and I'm definitely gonna vote yes on that, okay? Everything because it's, it's my guy. The other thing that I wanna mention, because when I was reading the climate on that environmental justice. You know how recently we passed that we're gonna go to one hundred percent green, right, uh, energy? The clean power. So we, our power is not coming from, no more from Edison. Edison delivered because they have the infrastructure. But our energy is coming from the clean power lines that is renewable energy. And by us doing that. Two week, uh, in January. So we are going to take, for example, by going one hundred percent green. We are taking thirty thousand cars out of the street, basically. It is equal to a hundred thirty-five thousand megaton. Of greenhouse gas gases that we going to eliminate. So we need to put these things in, in our plan too because we are doing, we're doing this. And the other thing that I said that we uh, about the evacuation plan. But we did, uh, we did have a report giving us by our city manager recently. That showed um, the disaster preparedness, right? Because we live in earthquake zone too. We have falls. So we have to have an evacuation plan. So I'm glad to see that everything is coming together. So what I'm telling you, my colleagues, I would love for us to have a study session on these. Environmental justice element because I think the people of Hawthorne deserve us to pay attention. To read all these reports that was given to us. Because it was outstanding. And my hat goes off to Mr. McLean, to Mr. Perry Bennett. You guys did an outstanding job and I'm proud to have you two. Working together. Thank you very much.
All right, uh. So Mr. uh, Mr. McLean and uh, and to the gentleman who's assisting us.
You have the city on his hands up.
Yeah, I know, but I'm speaking right now, so let me speak too. You had an opportunity also. So I just wanna also commend you on your work, Mr. Banner. You put a lot of effort in this, identifying uh, different areas that have specific needs. You also identified specific areas that were overburdened also. And so putting your heads together. Uh, I believe you came up with a good. A good report here for us that we can consider. Maybe a couple of things we can work out and adjust. Um, but for the most part, uh, it's a pretty, it's in pretty good shape. I'm very impressed with the environmental justice element. Um, that's an essential part in able, having us being able to make a good, sound decision. I do agree with my colleagues that having a study session, uh, will be able to have the residents give feedback. Um, based on what you've researched, uh, which is scientific in its manner that it was conducted. And I believe that uh, it'll be very educational for the community. Um, but as uh. As you guys did, uh, you guys did go out and ask for the opinions of a select group and uh, study group session. So if we have these works, uh, study sessions in the future. Focusing on the environmental justice element or any other aspect, I'm pretty sure we'll get some uh, good feedback from the community. And uh, we're gonna be enlightening a few people as well. So thank you very much for your diff- your very hard work. It was, this was difficult to put together, but uh, we had the right people working on this. Mr. City Attorney, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanna make a clarification before council takes a vote on these resolutions. Uh, the two, uh, one, the change to the recital and the findings to be added, that's limited to resolution number eighty-three forty-two, correct?
Yes, I think they will only need to apply to the housing elements.
Yes. And then the, in terms of the findings, is there an um, specific amount that you could recommend before we take a vote on this?
Uh, I recommend twenty-five thousand, which is city managed authority.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to reopen the uh. The comments from the public again. Is there anybody who has called to speak on the topic, Mr. City Clerk?
No, we have not received any calls or emails.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait about twenty seconds to see if there's any calls that come in. Okay? So we're waiting to, just in case uh, people are calling in, give them an opportunity to do so. Uh, I think we're, uh, this was a recommendation just to be able to. Have the community be able to get an opportunity in case they're interested. Okay, it's about, that's, it's about the right time, so.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, let me just, uh, look, I just got a text message from someone. I'm not gonna embarrass him.
Okay.
I said, why is this guy calling Hawthorne disadvantaged community? You see? That's what I said. They need to read that report.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, uh, resolution eighty-three forty-two?
All right. Make sure that's right, okay? So, resolution number, sorry, is. Is it forty-two?
Eighty-three forty-two.
Eighty-three forty-two.
Okay. Okay. Uh, resolution eighty-three forty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Approving a negative declaration for housing, safety, environmental justice elements. And adopting the sixth cycle twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-nine housing element for adoption.
Move.
Second. With the um, with the amendment and the recital.
Yes.
Uh, and the findings, uh, let me just read that one more time on the recital. It's whereas based on substantial evidence provided in the housing element background report. The city council finds that the existing uses on the sites identified to accommodate the city's. Our R H N A will not impede additional residential development during the planning period covered by the housing element. And the findings, uh, finding mi- minor modifications, the city manager is authorized to make minor modifications to the housing element. To address comments provided by the Department of Housing and Community Development on this housing element. Provided that the modifications would not exceed the total amount of development accommodated by the housing element prior to revisions. And would not result in new actions by the city that would require a general fund commitment of twenty-five thousand or greater. That will be added to resolution eighty-two, uh, eighty-three forty-two.
So, a motion has been made. I, I, I'm not changing the motion based on what you said as well. Go ahead.
And I said, based on the amendment.
I'll, I'll restate the motion. I make a motion based on the amendments, uh, on resolution eighty-three forty-two. With the appropriate amendments that just have been mentioned.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
You're, you're muted. Can you mute yourself, please, so we can hear you?
Sorry, yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. Clerk, resolution?
Greg, I just wanted to mention, good work to both of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for the excellent in- input that you all provided during those uh, study sessions. Have a great night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, resolution eighty-three forty-three?
Resolution number eighty-three forty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Adopting the twenty-twenty-two revised safety element for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English? Are you muted, miss?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Resolution eighty-three forty-four?
Resolution number eighty-three forty-four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Adopting the environmental justice element of the general plan for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay.
The uh, the uh, the second is being given to Councilmember Patterson. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, thank you, guys. Um, ordinances, we have an ordinance uh, for consideration. Mr. Clerk, can you read item number eighteen, please?
Yes, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending sections eight point five zero point zero one zero. Uh, eight point five zero point one four zero. Eight point five zero point one five zero. Eight point five zero point one six zero. Eight point five zero point one seven zero and eight point five zero two zero zero of chapter eight point five zero. Stormwater and urban runoff pollution control of title eight, health and safety of the Hawthorne municipal code to expand the existing stormwater management. And discharge control requirements and imposing rainwater low impact development. LID, strategies on projects that require building, grading and encroachment permits for introduction.
I move to introduce. Um, next, we have general matters. Mr. Clerk, please read item twenty for the record.
The city of Hawthorne short-term rental S T R ordinance was adopted two years ago from this month and amended about a year and a half later. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the council receive and file.
I move.
Second. I have discussion.
Um, a motion and a uh, second has been made. We, we, we can go to.
I can still ask the question.
You, well, we actually could technically just go to the vote, so I'll.
I'll, I'll ask a question at my closing remarks.
We'll grant you the opportunity. Go ahead.
Um, question, uh, Greg, if you're still there, is the short-term rental, the S T R, is that for um? Airbnb? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay, so I wasn't here when this was, you know, made approved or whatever. So what, what does it say as far as the, the, the language for um? As, for those types of rentals? Can you send me something so I could read up on that?
Um, do you want a summary or would you like the?
Yeah, just give me a, just give me a.
I'd like to hear a summary.
I'll, I'll provide a summary, yes.
Thank you. If you could send me that and then what you're saying basically, and this is basically. Thank you, if you could send me that and then what you're saying basically, and this is basically just filing what we already did a year ago, but. I don't know what you guys did a year ago, so I'll look at that and then.
That's a valid, that's a valid request from both uh council, uh Mayor Pro Tem Patterson and uh council member Angie Reyes English.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects uh council members and mayor voting yes.
Mister Clerk, uh item twenty-one, can you please bring that into the record and uh Public Works Director Alan Leung. Uh will give a presentation on the feasibility of outdoor dining in the City of Hawthorne.
Alright, feasibility of outdoor dining in Hawthorne.
Go ahead, uh Mister Alfred, Mister Alan Leung.
Yes, thank you. Uh good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council. Um tonight we're gonna have a PowerPoint presentation on outdoor dining, thank you, Eric. So can we go to the second slide? Okay, um for the ordinance and history, um. The outdoor dining started in February twenty-fourteen with Hawthorne's own code amendment. Allowing outdoor dining by permits. Then two months later, April twenty-fourteen, City Council passed ordinance twenty-sixty-eight. Allowing outdoor dining in the public railway, uh which is subject to encroachment permits. And um the approved encroachment permit to outdoor dining uh will be good for one year and must renew annually. Um then on August twenty-twenty and June twenty-twenty first. Uh due to COVID nineteen, the city waived the permit fee through December twenty-twenty-first. Um for the number of restaurant in Hawthorne, uh we have a total of hundred and fifty-five restaurant. Uh including fast food and majority of them are on major materials. Uh as you can see, um five restaurant is on one-twentieth street. Eight restaurant on Crenshaw Boulevard, um thirteen restaurant on El Segundo. Forty-four on Hawthorne, seven restaurant on Imperial Highway. Uh twenty restaurant each on Inglewood and on Perry and thirty restaurant on Rose Grand. Um from the number, um the highest street that has the restaurant is on Hawthorne Boulevard with a number forty-four. Thank you, next please. Um for the outdoor dining permit application, uh. This is a copy of the permit application, uh which required applicant and property owner's name, address and phone number. And the length of time for outdoor dining along with the number of chairs and table. Uh you can also see that we also require a diagram showing the setup of the outdoor dining. Uh next, please. Uh this is example of the diagram, this one is the setup uh in the sidewalk, in the public railway. Uh basically, the diagram uh should show the exact location and dimensions of the dining area. Uh it also show any utility poles, um streetlights and any other. Obstruction that is within ten feet of the encroached area. Um and also show the approximate location and dimension of all street features. Uh such as bus stop, benches, trash can and others. And lastly, it should also show the hours of operation of the outdoor dining area. Next, please. Um as for the permit process, the applicant can fill out and submit. Uh the permit with liability insurance, um either through Hawthorne website or they can do it in person. Um they can either submit it to Planning Department for parking lot dining request. Or to Public Works for public railway dining request, which require encroachment permits. Um the location, the site will be inspected by the city. And the city will verify the liability insurance and if the permit is approved. Um the permit is gonna cost one hundred dollar and it's valid for one year. Next, please. So how many uh permit has we issued so far? Um for year twenty-twenty and year twenty-twenty-first, which is during the COVID nineteen period. We have issued eleven uh permit out of for hundred and fifty-five restaurant. Which is approximately seven percent of all the restaurant uh prior for the permits. And nine out of the eleven permits are for outdoor dining at the restaurants parking lot. And two of the eleven are for dining within the sidewalk in the city. And as of February of this year, uh we know at least four out of the eleven permit, they no longer operate outdoor dining. Since majority of the restaurant are on Hawthorne Boulevard, we use uh this street as an example. Uh on Hawthorne Boulevard, we have forty-four restaurant. Uh thirty-two of the forty-four restaurant are set back and away from the sidewalk and inside a shopping center. The remaining twelve restaurant are adjacent to the sidewalk. So for outdoor dining in the public railway, uh this twelve restaurant are the one that can benefit the most. Uh the other thirty-two restaurant are located too far to effectively serve and operate dining on the sidewalk. Or on the parking area, which may explain why the number of the permit uh for outdoor dining is is low. So what is outdoor dining within the public railway, there are two types. Uh one is within the sidewalk, parkway area, uh where the applicant will place table and chairs and divider if necessary. And this op- this operation will have no cost to the city, this is all done by the applicant or the restaurant. Uh the second one is uh outside the sidewalk, uh parkway area. And it's gonna be on the parking area or the parking lane. Uh for this, the city will provide and maintain protection for outdoor dining. With K rail, uh and build platform to level with the sidewalk for eight compliance. Uh the approximate dimension will be between seven to fifteen feet wide. Uh by twenty feet long, uh to serve approximately uh four to six tables. Uh the estimated cost for this type of setup is twenty-five thousand dollar each. And if electricity is needed for an operation, then it's gonna be extra five thousand to seventy-five hundred dollar. Added to the twenty-five thousand dollar uh per location. Next. Uh this is a sample of the outdoor dining, um. This one is in the parkway area, uh not encroaching onto the street or sidewalk. Next, please. Uh this one occupy the parking area with K rail. Uh to protect the diners and a raised platform to level with the sidewalk. The platform is in the green color, uh with artificial lawn. Next. Uh this is another setup in the parking area with K rail. Thanks. So things to consider for outdoor dining within the public railway, uh. Is to look at the possible removal of on-street parking, uh we do have a high demand for parking. And a lot of the restaurant do rely on this parking for their customers. Uh second is security for diners and restaurants. And potential increase of debris on streets and sidewalks. And lastly, uh is the safety and the liability for the city. For city contact, uh it is the Planning Department for parking lot dining requests. And Public Works for requests for moving into public railway. Next. So, tonight, uh we are just seeking directions from the city council. Regarding our outdoor dining ordinance, whether to expand the program or to keep it as is. Um and with that, we we open this for discussions.
Any comments from staff, uh from the uh residents? I mean from, I'm sorry, from uh my councilmember colleagues. Let me see, let me see. I'll just start from.
On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
We have an opportunity because um. This is like a once in a lifetime opportunity for us. Other cities have been able to spend money to build outdoor dining facilities. We have not been able to do so, but because of COVID. We would have the resources to be able to put. Outdoor dining facilities in several areas, which I believe. Um when I first, when I first introduced the idea of outdoor dining in twenty-fourteen. It was very clear to me that if it was done the right way and if you had the restaurants involved. You could create a really wonderful atmosphere of outdoor dining, that's why I proposed it. It hasn't been so successful because we haven't as a city been able to put any money into it. But now we are, we now would be able to do so because of COVID. So I I I think we should really work to drill down and try and see if we can do something. Because this is a way to increase commerce in our city. Um I think as a start. Um we 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 probably need to look at. Some of the places in air in the city which already have concentrations of restaurants. It may not be on Hawthorne Boulevard. We've got concentrations of restaurants in several malls. There's the one-hundred-and-twentieth street in Crenshaw, there's one at El Segundo and Crenshaw. Um. And there's also one at uh El Segundo and Inglewood. These are places where you have concentrations of restaurants. I think we could look at trying to put. Restaurant, uh put put outdoor dining in those parking lot areas. Although this would require some effort, it would require cooperation with the owners of the of the properties. Cause I know it's private property. But I think that would be, that would be something we should look at. Um. But I think this is uh, this is a like a a a an amazing opportunity that we have to do this, and I don't think we should. Pass it by. Um. There are other areas in the city which we could look at, I don't know of, I I I don't know of any other areas that have concentrations of restaurants. You you need out, you need to build a facility. For outdoor dining where you have two, three restaurants. That where the public could could take advantage of using the outdoor dining facility. So with that, I would say, my recommendation would be that we study this. Um asks, ask staff to in, to study the the poss- I'd like to get some input from Alan about what we, what he just, what I just said. Ask staff to study this and see if the owners are receptive to our doing something like this. I think that would be a start, but I think it's something we should study further.
Um so Alan, can you just take that uh recommendation, please? Councilmember Reyes English.
Thank you, um Alan, thank you for the presentation. Back in twenty-fourteen, when the council approved outdoor dining, the dynamics were a lot different. They were fully staffed, the restaurants were fully staffed, they were able to keep an eye on those that were dining outside. And more importantly, uh. Have a um an out- an outside dining experience, right? And then in the last two years, because they were forced to have to go outside to keep their businesses open. People were stealing food, not paying their checks. Because there wasn't enough staff that was overseeing those outdoor outdoor dining experiences. So in speaking to businesses, what they need right now is what we're offering through our business. Uh Recovery Act dollars to keep businesses open, not so much. Dining experiences, I think that's the least of their minds right now. They're trying to stay open, they're trying to keep their employees employed and they're trying to provide for their families. And some of these businesses were not able to recover and it was a loss to them. And they're still having to pay for that loss through, um you know. Existing buildings or not, brick and mortar businesses, um. Moneys that they've had to pay for products and 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 equipment and things that they right now have to pay. So I don't think, you know, uh this, this is necessarily a time to. Inquire on the outdoor experience, how however, I'm sure it's gonna happen eventually as we recover and we get back to normalcy. And maybe as we get other businesses that come to Hawthorne that provides a better opportunity as far as food choices. At a larger setting, something that's uh a little more family friendly, so that there could be a family dining experience. Uh but I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this back, just like the Airbnb issue and things that we still have to continuously look at. I don't necessarily see this as a pressing issue or something that we ne- need to des- you know desperately dive into. But uh you know, that's that that's my recommendations, I think we're still in recovery mode. And a lot of the people that had the businesses outside are actually wanting to come back inside. Because they wanna be able to to watch over their clientele. And have control over who's serving and how it's being served and 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 done properly, but more importantly. They got tired of folks uh running out with their bills and not paying it. So, it's kind of like a a balance we gotta make, but thank you for your presentation, it's all good.
Councilmember Montero.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, uh thank you, Alan, for your presentation, uh I like it, um. Yeah, I agree with uh uh Ms. Valentine that we need to do a visibility study. Uh I I ask the business, you know, they were in, still interesting in in us, the city to convert. These places into outdoor dining experience. And it's not just outdoor dining, because you when you, when I went to Hermosa Beach during COVID. Um it was an, almost not, it was like like a nightclub restaurant with live music. And they still were sitting outside on the sidewalks, okay? And and people also were standing, uh because they had those barricades, so. I agree that we have an opportunity right now because of the HARP money, because of the COVID money. Uh to do, to to revamp some of these restaurants, even to put outdoor dining because. I agree with Ms. Valentine that, you know, especially Hawthorne Boulevard, we need to make a way that people will stop. People, it would not just be a driving through to the uh community, so they will stop and enjoy some type of. Good food, or maybe some live music or something. Because even uh there is like a programs out there. That is putting this uh almost like um. Trailer, trailer, trailer restaurant that is ten by ten in the middle of streets. Like, you know, like like parking space that are not being utilized, they have put like say five or ten of these trailers. It's just restaurants and people sits, seats outside around them. So I want us to to revamp Hawthorne on a different way and and that's what I agree with Ms. Valentine that. We have the HARP money and we know these business, uh they cannot pay for this uh construction or we call it, you know, uh. Renovation or those burial, I believe that the city should do that. If 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 we wanna see Hawthorne to be prosperous and to be progressive and to be uh one of the destination like the beach series. We need to do this type of uh modification. So I do agree that we have the HARP money that to put it in there, because when you look at uh between uh. You know, twenty-five thousand dollar, right? I think, you know, uh you might have fourteen business wants to do it or. Or you might, you know, because like Ms. Valentine said, it's not just Hawthorne Boulevard, but for example, there is. Inglewood Boulevard on one-hundred-and-eighteen, you have the Zacatecas there, they have outside, but they, you know, they put uh the canopy outside. You got some other, some other uh places on on Inglewood that is putting stuff outs- outside. So so when you look at Hawthorne Boulevard and we want, because Hawthorne Boulevard is a very traffic. Uh area that people drive through to go to P V because they wanna get out of the freeway. Then you got El Segundo, you got Crenshaw, so you have a. I think we, even at the brewing section, you know, the, because I wanna create like a brewing district that have. The the beers, the wine tasting restaurant, so start thinking in those mode. That Hawthorne, we need to revamp Hawthorne and we need this type of work. And like Ms. Valentine said, we have an opportunity because we have. And like Ms. Valentine said, we have an opportunity because we have the HARP money. Because if it was coming from our general fund, we couldn't do that. But now we do have some money. So I'll say, do that study because I think Ms. Valentine is on the right path. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Before we move on to Mayor Protemp, I just wanted, I was trying to raise my own hand here to go ahead and make some points. But look, I think we want, everybody here is talking about bringing Hawthorne to the next level, making Hawthorne a destination. It has been in different ways, but taking it to a different level in terms of being a social destination, I think is very important. I do want to address the security concern that one of my colleagues mentioned. People running off without paying. The owners not wanting to do this. Just remember, this is giving them the option. It's not mandating it. If they think that they logistically can account for this and be able to manage this and be able to man this, they'll do it because it's going to help them bring more business to their restaurant. And they're going to get a following. They could have something regular on the weekends. At one point in Hawthorne's history, even up to the early 80s, to the early late 80s and 90s, even the early 90s, there was an active bar scene in the city of Hawthorne. There was an active bar scene. And the thing is, some of those bars still exist. Right now, you have the Corner Bar over there. You have the Rocket down there. And then one or two bars that are still on Hawthorne Boulevard that are really low key. We've got a couple over here on El Segundo. No, on Inglewood Avenue. You have some others that were on Rose Prans Avenue because of the big aerospace groups that used to work here in Norththor. Rockwell as well. They used to come to the city of Hawthorne to have some drinks and to be able to hang out with their buddies and their girlfriends. So this is not an idea that's foreign to the city of Hawthorne with regards to the bar scene. And now taking it to a different level, which is not just having bars for adults, but having a dining scene for families, for youngsters, those who can't get into a bar, those who just want to go and have something to eat. And I think because of COVID, it already started getting, having people think of it. Some would like to continue. But without having the proper ordinances in place and the proper code allowing them to, they're at risk for getting tickets from our code enforcement department. They might not be able to get a license if we just don't take action and on the most basic level allow them to have that sidewalk dining. Now this more elaborate type of scene that we would like to develop, I do agree. I think that a study session will help lay that out to see how realistically it would pan out on Hawthorne Boulevard. I see Hawthorne Boulevard as being a walking destination where there's going to be some restaurants people can stop off at and be able to dine on the sidewalks. We purposely made the sidewalks wide enough on certain parts of Hawthorne Boulevard so that could happen. That was already planned into our renovation of Hawthorne Boulevard.
That's a specific plan.
Yeah, you remember that?
Yeah.
So that's why we did it. So now I think we need to go to that next level. And honestly, for whatever reason, maybe because all the celebrities and the governor and the mayor of LA got cut, everybody, there's no more masking. All of a sudden, it's going away. I mean, hey, man, you got to agree.
It's because the COVID is going down.
Well, I look at this numbers. They're kind of similar to what they were at some point, the same point last year, slightly. But whatever that is, I think we're on a road to recovery. The numbers are going down. Hopefully, you're right and I'm wrong, Councilman Montero. But let's just go ahead and just start making something happening. And let's not be left behind on that. Let's start the momentum so that people can start coming to Hawthorne before they go to other cities. Okay? Mayor Protemp?
I have just a couple of questions. Who would conduct this feasibility study?
I think we may have to get Planning Department involved since it may involve private property.
So it would be the Planning Department that would conduct the feasibility study?
Yeah, so Mayor Protemp, I would oversee that project. I'll work with multiple departments, starting with planning, bring in building safety in if needed, and public works.
And Vaughn, just not to interrupt you, but also that would be part of our ad hoc committee for the economic development. So we can even tie that up with that, Mayor Protemp.
Absolutely. I would imagine that somebody who's maybe familiar with like just the economics of what's being proposed would be involved, right? So it's not just the mechanics of what it would take to build it out. But I would imagine like, you know, it'd be factored in, you know, location. I'm sure it wouldn't make sense for us to build out these outdoor eating platforms in various parts throughout the city, like in front of just specific restaurants all over the city. So I imagine somebody who would be in charge of this study would kind of consider there being, I guess, a hub or not. You know, a, yeah, I know some of the areas that, in Manhattan Beach, that have this, it's in a specific area by the beach. I don't think they have it like all over the place. So I just, you know, want to make sure that that's taken into consideration as far as appropriateness of the location and be some kind of analysis of like what it would bring to these businesses and to the city. So I mean, I definitely understand that at one point where people couldn't eat inside, definitely an opportunity to eat outside. Now people are going back to eating inside. We would have to kind of have a plan for what area we would be trying to build out this type of experience as opposed to building it out, you know, willy nilly all over the city. So that's one question. Just want to make sure that we have, you know, all the right people on the bus in doing such of analysis and make sure that we have the personnel to do so. I know specifically in our Planning Department, we don't have many people in that department. So I'm not sure, I wouldn't want them just to be removing their attention from what they're working on now to work on something like this while, you know, there's some value to it. I think we have some things that are a greater priority that we're working on throughout the city. So we need to make sure, at least make sure whatever that you're tasking staff to do that is prioritized properly and we understand kind of what's most important. Second, if we were to ever move forward with something like this, my question is, is I heard the idea of that HARP money could be used to fund it. So my next question is, are we talking about the money that was moved over to the general fund? Or are we talking about monies that it's more restricted, that has to be used by a specific time and for specific purposes?
Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Valentine? Do you want to take that question on your direction?
Yes, please go ahead and I'm going to ask you to research that because I don't, I don't know if that would be, it would be my preference if we could use it, if we had the ability to use the funds and they were that kind of funds that were authorized under the restricted funds. But I certainly don't have any problem using it, the money that's been put into the general fund either. But it would be my preference to use the funds that are allocated if they are in fact allocated for a purpose like that. I think they are. Am I correct, City Manager?
Monies that were transferred over to the general fund is per the directional council for spending. I would need to check with our finance director and our outside consultant to see if outside dining and building erecting a platform or eating area would be something that's reimbursable. So I would have to circle back and report back to council regarding that item.
I definitely think it's a good idea to ask the business community, you know, what do they need? Like, do they feel like the lack of something like that is holding them back? Or would they benefit more from, like Councilmember Ray English said, you know, funds to help them catch up on rent, do some marketing, maybe upgrade their facade, blah, 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 all these other things? So, you know, yeah, I'm definitely interested in kind of somebody doing some more in-depth research on this topic. But definitely let's not take, let's prioritize staff time appropriately.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilman Montero?
Thank you. I was thinking, Vaughn, did that business survey have gone out already?
No, it has not. Our ETA for that to go out is next week or so. And they know how a QR code that the businesses will be able to access the survey or application to fill out.
Do you think they still have time for us to put a question there about this outdoor? If business were interesting, if the city would pay for that?
I'm sure we can edit that document, that item.
So then we can just kill two birds in one stone? Because that survey still have not gone out.
Okay. Great direction. Noted.
Yeah, thank you. And the other, just a little comment. I went to eat on a restaurant recently, actually it was Sunday, very close to us. And they have robots delivering food. The robot, believe me, no waitress.
I want to see that. Where's that? You got to tell us where it's at. Come on.
Kitchen pizza in Manhattan Beach, right there at the Village.
Oh, I thought you meant in Hawthorne.
No, not in Hawthorne.
I'm trying to keep my money here in Hawthorne.
Well, but the thing is, I went to Maysys to buy something for gift and then I just stopped by the kitchen pizza place and they have robots delivering food to the tables. It come from the kitchen. It goes, you know, it have eyes, you know, it goes.
Oh, a CPK. Yeah, I did have that experience.
It's unbelievable. So that's kind of things that also, you know, like robots are going to take some of the jobs away from people. So that's the issue that it's coming for the 21st century. That's my joke for tonight. Okay? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a further comment. I noticed that the permit doesn't capture the email address of the requesting party. I think we need to take every opportunity we can to get the email addresses of the businesses because I noticed that in many cases, we don't have their email addresses. So can we modify that permit to add on a requirement that they put on, put their email address on there?
Yes, we can do that. Yes.
Yeah. And any other documents we have where we're actually soliciting information from businesses, I think we should request their email addresses.
We'll do that.
I believe also the business license, when they send the renewal, because, you know, I did a few of them, they ask for email. So I always put my email on the bottom. So I don't know if the business license keep tracking those emails because they ask for email address. I put mine in there, you know, for my nonprofit.
But in many cases, they don't have email addresses. I don't, I don't know exactly why, but they just, in many cases, they don't have them.
Uh huh. Okay, so staff has been directed. Mr. Clerk, please read item 22 into the record.
Landlord tenant issues. Elena Eden, Director of Media Outreach and Education Housing Rights Center. Recommended motion, the staff advises that the city council receive and file the report.
Is there a presentation with this?
Elena, are you here present?
I am present. Yes, hello.
Yeah, go ahead and go through this, please.
Okay, great. So I'm going to be sharing my own slides.
Elena, can I ask you a quick question? So is the telephone number active right now, but walk-in is not available, right?
Are you asking about, I'm sorry, about the Housing Rights Center?
The Housing Rights Center, yeah.
Yes, yes. Our physical offices are currently still closed. But the lines and the online are open.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I was asked to talk today about the eviction process and then also about the Los Angeles County COVID-19 tenant protection. So that's, those are the two things that I'm going to be talking about. Just a brief introduction to HRC for people who may not be familiar. The Housing Rights Center is a fair housing organization and we are contracted with the city of Hawthorne as well as with the county and many other cities in this area to provide free services for both landlords and tenants. Our services are available in multiple languages that we have on staff or that we can partner with interpreters to provide in the event that we don't have someone on staff. The services that we provide are probably our most popular service is housing counseling. And this is what I was just asked about in terms of how people can contact us. Housing counseling basically means providing information. Housing issues can be complicated and people have lots and lots of questions and our counselors are available to give that legal information and help people understand their rights. We also investigate cases of discrimination and we can enforce anti-discrimination, fair housing laws in many cases as well. So we very commonly assist with requests for disability accommodations in housing. There are many other issues that also come up that I'm happy to talk about. People have questions. And then we can also do outreach and education and that is what I do. As we mentioned, we've been doing this primarily virtually during the pandemic, although we're still doing lots of in-person events and we will be at Hawthorne's Earth Day Fair in April. But we are also providing a weekly workshop on these COVID-19 tenant protections because we get these questions so often. We're providing them in English and Spanish on Facebook every week. We also provide a listing of affordable housing opportunities throughout LA County, which is also free and which is updated monthly. It's called Project Place. We've been doing that for many years. And people seeking affordable housing is always a huge issue for people who come to us as well. So having introduced us, I want to say a bit about the COVID-19 rent relief program. And people may be aware of this, but just to recap, this program can provide 100% of unpaid rent that a tenant may have missed or not been able to pay due to the pandemic all the way back to April 2020. So that's basically two years worth of rent that if a tenant missed that rent because of the pandemic, they can get it made up by this program and the landlord can recover that money as well because that's their income. This program is closing. They are not going to be accepting new applications after March 31st, which is very soon. And people really need to get their applications in in order to get either that rent or that income back. The criteria for the program are pretty broad. Primarily just the household income of the tenant should be 80% area median income or under. And that the need for the assistance that is related to the pandemic. They've been financially impacted by the pandemic somehow. The landlord can initiate the application. The tenant could also initiate it. It works faster if they work together. But either one can actually go through the process. And that again is housing.ca.gov for this program. The program also provides a defense for tenants against eviction for unpaid rent. So the state is really trying to route people away from eviction for unpaid rent and toward this program instead. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about what a defense against eviction actually means in a moment. But to go over just the process of how this works in general, the first step in an eviction is a notice from the landlord to the tenant. And that's actually just a warning. So the landlord has to warn the tenant that they intend to file an eviction. And the notice usually comes with a time period for how long the tenant has to do something in response to that warning to potentially prevent the eviction. For example, if the tenant hasn't paid rent, the landlord could give a pay or quit notice, which is usually a three-day notice, giving the tenant three days to respond. To highlight some of the COVID updates in this process, currently for a pay or quit notice, the landlord does have to include information about the COVID-19 rent relief program. So again, the state is trying to push people to this program and away from eviction when possible. Right? There are other kinds of notices, for example, Right, there are other kinds of notices, for example, um, terminating a tenancy for no fault of the tenant, but just ending the contract. That might be a thirty-day or a sixty-day notice, depends on some more circumstances. But they all typically work in this way where it's a warning to the tenant, they don't have to move out at this point, which is very important. What they should do is respond to the notice from the landlord in writing. And the tenant has, you know, options for how they wanna handle this situation. They could, um, solve, you know, correct the problem that the landlord has brought to their attention, whatever it may be. They could decide to move out, or they could basically, um, sit tight and see if the landlord will file in court for the eviction. But before we get to that, let's look again at the three-day pay or quit notice during this time, right? So the tenant could respond to this notice by providing their landlord with a form that basically says, I've had financial hardship. Because of COVID nineteen. This was under state law, under the, uh, COVID nineteen Rental Housing Recovery Act. You might have heard this called AB, uh, um, eight thirty-two. Um, but they have the ability to basically claim a hardship, right? And that will be in place until the end of this month as well. They could also provide written confirmation that they have applied for rent relief. And again, that rent relief application is gonna basically, you could almost think of it as superseding an eviction proceeding. That's not the technical term, but you can think of it that way. Um, of course, they could also pay the rent, or they could move out, um, or they could go to court, right? So in terms of this form, um, you know, claiming hardship, uh, we do have that available for tenants on our website. In English and in Spanish, uh, housingrightscenter.org. On our homepage, there's a pop-up. Where you can quickly download that form, because this is a situation that so many people come across and have questions about, we try to make it available. So, after the landlord has issued a wr- written warning to the tenant, and the tenant has given back some kind of written response. At that point is when the landlord, um, can file an eviction in court. Or they, if, even if the tenant does not respond, they can still do this. Um, but assuming the issue is not resolved, right, they would then move to court. So the eviction lawsuit is called the unlawful detainer. And again, under state law, because of COVID nineteen, before evicting for unpaid rent specifically. Landlords will have to tell the court whether they did apply for rent relief, or at least attempt somehow in good faith. To receive rent relief instead of going toward eviction. Um, but what will happen once the landlord files in court and sort of begins the official eviction action? Is that the tenant will receive a summons from the court in the mail. And this is really, really important for tenants to respond to, because now we're in court, this is a legal process. And if, um, you know, if you don't, if you don't follow the process, then you can lose your case. So tenants have five business days to file a response, uh, the form is called an answer. And we strongly recommend that, uh, people in this situation do get legal aid to help them understand this process. Um, and how to engage in the eviction, uh, process, so that they get a chance to actually, uh, make their arguments. Um, if legal aid is not available, the courthouses do have self-help centers, some of them do. That can help people to fill out an answer form, just to get the chance to actually go before the judge, um, and state their case. And that's, um, really what the answer form is for. It allows the tenant either to deny the claim, um, the basis for the eviction, or to assert a defense. And this stage, the defense, the affirmative defense, is really where most of the protections come into play. So there's nothing in place that stops a landlord from giving a notice to a tenant. There's nothing in place that stops a landlord from filing an eviction against a tenant. Um, and then the eviction can go before a judge, as is the normal process. Um, and at that point, the laws give the tenant the ability to speak up and raise a defense. So, and I'm gonna go into what those are, um, after this section, but just wanna get the basics of the process down first. So, we now have been summoned by the court, both sides, and have responded, and now, um, they have to appear in court, right? So it's very important to appear in court, and many tenants don't realize that. Um, they also have the right to a jury trial if they wish. Another option is that the landlord and tenant might settle, and that settlement, um, would include some kind of compromise. Where perhaps, for example, the tenant agrees to leave, um, without an eviction on their record, or without going through this whole process. Um, if they are granted more time to leave, or if they're granted some financial assistance, or some other form of compromise. Um, that doesn't involve necessarily battling in court, or having the official eviction. However, that being said, um, you know, if the case does go forward, and let's say that the tenant loses the case, right? So the judge rules against the tenant, and they are gonna be evicted. So at that point, the tenant has five days to vacate their homes, it's not a long time, um, before the sheriffs can be called to come and lock them out. The eviction record will appear on their rental history report, so tenant screening companies can see that information. And any unpaid rent, uh, remains on their credit report for seven years. And this can be a really big barrier to finding housing again, obviously. Um, if the judge rules in favor of the tenant and, um, dismisses the eviction, the tenant can stay in their home. They have to, of course, continue to pay rent, just like normal. Um, they're protected from another attempt for six months, so this is to stop sort of clogging of the system with repeated, um, complaints. And if they do win, then the, the record of the eviction is masked. So it can still be seen, um, but it's not as easily accessible. And really, I shouldn't say if the tenant wins, what I really should say is if the tenant doesn't lose. You can't really, as a tenant, win an eviction case, you can only not lose, right? Um, so that is sort of the process as a whole, how it normally works, all of the different things that have to happen. And, um, it is a legal process, it is due process, uh, as part of our justice system. So, for example, trying to avoid all of this by changing the locks on a tenant, or cutting off the utilities. So that they will move out is all illegal, but has also increased a lot during the pandemic. So, I'm sorry, I said, do I still have time to talk about the county protections?
Oh, yeah, but just to try to streamline it a little bit more?
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms.
Yeah, so the LA County, uh, COVID nineteen protections is, is, uh, what applies in the City of Hawthorne. So they apply as a baseline in incorporated cities too. They apply to all types of rental properties, doesn't matter if it's a house or an apartment. And again, it's a really about these defenses that tenants can raise in court, and also some consumer protections for their rent debt. So the defenses that tenants have right now, um, are against, uh, are, are based on the reason for the eviction. So a reason that is not the fault of the tenant, like demolishing the home, remodeling, et cetera. Um, the tenant can raise a defense against this in court. Uh, if the tenant has an unauthorized occupant, someone staying with them who's not on the lease, or a pet. Um, or nuisance like noise from having the kids home when the schools are closed, and other COVID impacts, things like that. The tenant also has a defense against this eviction. Um, and lastly, for not allowing the landlord to come into the home, because they don't want to interact with people because of COVID nineteen. And as you can see, these protections are gonna be ending. So, um, most of them end at the end of the year, the ability to deny the landlord entry will end May thirty-first. Um, and there are also some exceptions for property owners who wanna move into their own property, or move in their family members to that property as well. It's not every case, um, there are some criteria, uh, to meet, but that is something that the county did carve out. As far as the consumer protections for the debt, it's a little bit more complicated. But basically, the tenant has the ability, will have the ability, to do two things. One is to defer or delay when the rental payment is actually due. And the second is to get that rent debt reclassified as consumer debt, so equivalent to credit card debt. Right, as a form of consumer debt. Um, and so the tenant is responsible for paying that back, there's nothing in any of these laws that takes that away. But in this case, um, what the landlord would do to get that money back, if the tenant didn't pay it. Instead of eviction, is they would go to small claims court and pursue it, just like it was some other form of debt. So that's the big difference here. Um, tenants are gonna be able to do this in April and May. And then after that, from June to the rest of the year, only the lower-income tenants, under eighty percent area median income. Are gonna be able to continue to defer or delay their rental payments. To do this, tenants basically just have to give their landlord written notice that they are going to be deferring the rent. Um, and, uh, explanation of, uh, their financial impact of COVID nineteen. That is pretty much it, I just wanted to flag these resources. Um, Stay Housed LA is legal aid for LA County tenants. The Department of, uh, that should say, excuse me, Consumer and Business Affairs is, uh, overseeing other issues with these ordinance. This ordinance and harassment issues, and then of course, us, we're available to give trainings and do counseling on these issues as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, are there any questions for the, for the representative? Let me see, I can't see the.
I see one from, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, council member Ray English?
Thank you, uh, Elana, for your, um, presentation, you know. Uh, I believe that the Housing Rights Center is, is, is so important to the constituency, not just in our city. But throughout Los Angeles, and, um, I'm glad that you were able to present. It was a long presentation, but it was good information, because you, you would not believe how many times the council members, the mayor. All of us here in the city are contacted. And, um, you know, we don't like to interfere in tenant landlord disputes, obviously, it's, it's their issue. But we just don't wanna sit, say, you know, it's not our problem, we wanna be able to refer you and give you assistance in other ways. So all of this was very educational. I'd like at some point, when you have some time, if you could either email myself or Vaughn, a direct number, so that I could use that. Um, especially when I'm contacted directly for, uh, assistance, and that's very, that's very often. But thank you so much for your presentation, thank you for hanging in there. On the screen.
Thank you for having me.
Waiting for your time.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Montero?
Hi, uh, Ms. Elena, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. A quick question, the, the county of Los Angeles was trying to extend the moratorium on eviction, uh, did they pass it?
Um, yeah, the dates that I gave are, are the extension, so they extended most of the protections to the end of this year, December thirty-first.
December thirty-first, yes, okay, all right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, for your presentation, uh, I make a motion to accept, uh, the report. Given by Ms. Elena Eden.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Ray English?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. Clerk, item thirty-three?
Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you.
Item twenty-three?
Yes, sir. Review of the mid-year financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive, approve, and file the mid-year financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two.
Go ahead, staff.
At this time, I'd like to introduce, uh, Felice Lopez, our finance director, she has a presentation to address this item on the agenda. Turn it over to you, Felice.
Thank you. Thank you, um, good evening, mayor, uh, good evening, uh, mayor Protem and council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this tonight, let me share my screen. Okay, are you able to see that okay?
Yes.
All right, okay, so, um, I'm gonna begin with the cash balance for, um, the end of the year. At, on December thirty-first, uh, we, as of twenty eighteen, we've been tracking it, and we were at fourteen million. Um, over the years, um, you can see that we've, um, done really well, uh, and built up our balance. To what it is at, as of December tw- thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, which is fifty-seven million, nine hundred thousand. Um, and this is, uh, part of this increase is due to the eleven point four million one-time transfer from ARPA funding. Um, move on to our next screen. Um, our fiscal year budget history, we originally adopted the, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two budget in June of twenty twenty-one. The expenditures were at seventy-nine point three million, and revenues were at seventy-nine point four. The budget was amended, um, when council approved additional ARPA funding. And the expenditures, uh, were increased to eighty-one, almost eighty-one point two million. And revenues, um, increased to ninety point nine million. Um, of the, of the ARPA funding that was approved, three hundred and four thousand dollars has been spent. Um, as of December, and through February, that increased to four hundred and sixty-one thousand. Okay, um, our quarter ended December thirty-one, um, revenues were at, uh, an increase of fifteen point four percent. Compared to the previous year, this includes, um, uh, that does not include the ARPA funding. So if you include the ARPA funding, that increase is at sixty-two point five six percent. Um, our most significant increases, and, and, um, there was a typo in your copy, it said decreases. But our most, most significant increases in revenue are, uh, business license tax, which increased by two hundred and thirty-four percent. Uh, in the previous fiscal year, they were at two hundred and ninety-five thousand, and in the current fiscal year, those increased at nine hundred and eighty-four thousand. As of December thirty-one. Um, hotel TOT increased by fifty-eight percent, last year they were at one point two million. Um, and this year, we ended, uh, at almost two million dollars. And sales tax combined, which is the, um, Bradley Burns and Measure HH, increased by fourteen percent. Uh, last year, we were at ten point four million as of December thirty-one, and this year we ended at eleven point, um, nine million. Um, we do wanna note that, um, uh, combined, our, our sales tax revenue is about fifty-one percent. Of the city's tax revenue, uh, UUT comes in, um, right below that, or not right below. Is our next highest at thirteen point one percent, and property tax is about twelve point two percent of our tax revenue. Um, and tax revenues as a whole are fifty-eight point nine percent of the city's revenue. And here, we're just comparing, um, any revenues that were over a million dollars, um, to prior years. So you can see, our refuse tax, um, has gone up from nineteen twenty of one point three million. And is currently at one point four million, the utility users' tax was at two point seven, and is currently at, um, just under three million one hundred thousand. Um, our TOT tax, which is our hotel tax, was at two point, almost at two point three. Um, and that actually decreased slightly to, uh, one point nine million. Um, our sales and use tax, which is our Bradley Burns, uh, was at six point one million in nineteen twenty. And has increased to seven point one, uh, in the current fiscal year. Our sales tax add-on, which is our Measure HH, um, was at three point seven six five, and is currently at almost four point eight. And property taxes in nineteen twenty were at two point seven million, and are currently over two point eight million. Our non-tax revenues, um, at the mid-year compared to prior years. Uh, program contributions were at four hundred and twenty-five thousand in nineteen twenty, and are currently at five hundred thousand. Uh, other revenue, which includes, um, um. Our contributions, which includes, um, the water contribution and those types of things. That was at one point, almost at one point three million, and is currently at one, well, one million two ninety, and is currently at one million two eighty. Our current service charges were at nine hundred fifty-seven thousand in nineteen twenty, and have increased to over a million. Uh revenue from use of money, which is our interest, was at two hundred ninety one thousand in nineteen twenty. And is currently at a hundred and thirty two thousand. Fines and forfeitures were at one point one million and those have slightly decreased to uh just over one million. And the last item would be license and permits, were at one point, almost at one point five million. And are currently at seven hundred and eighteen thousand. Okay, and here is just comparison of our um increased sales tax numbers. Bradley Burns increased by fifteen percent and Measure H H increased by fourteen percent. Um again, the city's has a stable and diverse economic base. Um there is room to diversify. Um as you can see by our chart here, our largest pieces are are coming from general consumer goods. Which is our warehouse stores, department stores, sporting goods, that type of thing. Um that's twenty five percent. Autos and transportation are at twenty one percent. And the county pool is at eighteen, whereas if you look at restaurants and other, um is at fifteen percent. Restaurants um are only six percent of our tax base. And fuel and service stations are about five percent. So we do have room to bring in other businesses. To continue to diversify the tax revenues for the city. Um our expenditures as of December thirty first uh increased by fifteen point nine five percent compared to previous years. Um we realized increases in all expenditure categories. A large part of those increases are due to additional COVID-related expenditures. And the additional approved ARPA funding expenditures. Um so our budget is currently at um a level of forty nine point three seven percent expended. Our general fund required cash balance um for this fiscal year was nineteen point nine per um million. Um and as of December, that cash balance is at fifty seven point nine million. In summary, uh the mid-year uh for twenty one, twenty two um is on track. The revenues are up as expected. Uh expenditures are up as expected and um we have provided, staff has provided a list of mid-year appropriations. Um for your review and um several of our revenue line items um have shown increases. Um so we are um recommending that we increase those budgets. We're also seeing that there are some expenditures that require um increases or additional funding. Due to um. Unanticipated programs or additional requests, and so we are asking that you approve um those mid-year requests. Um and um we do see that the pandemic has uh continued and we will continue to monitor. Um and hopefully, we'll see, you know, even better results in the next year. That completes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions for Felice?
I have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um thank you, Felice, for that really clear um understandable presentation. I really enjoyed listening to it. You you did a really good job at that, making it clear to us.
Thank you.
Uh non-tax revenues, I want to call your attention to that.
Mm-hmm.
Um first of all, the revenue from the use of money and property, what is that and why is it so low?
Uh that's our interest. Um and so it it was uh. It was a little bit higher in the in nineteen twenty because interest rates were high. Um and during the pandemic, those interest rates um dropped considerably. And that's why we we only see a hundred and thirty two thousand in that category.
Okay, and what is program contribution? What is that?
Program contributions are what we receive from the water, the refuse. Um uh actually, uh no, the program contributions are what we receive for transit police. And for our um helicopter, the airship.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Mayor, just a quick quick.
Um I think Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem uh first and then Councilmember Montero, please.
Just real quick, I just want to say I appreciate the mid-year appropriation changes that that part of the the report. Kind of gives us an idea of how um funds are being reallocated, as well as some uh some additional revenues. So I definitely appreciated that part of the report.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Montero?
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh thank you, Mister uh Ms. Felice Lopez. Uh yeah, like Miss Valentine said, very clear. Right, I love the graphs, right, especially the comparisons from twenty twenty to twenty twenty two. Uh just to point out about the the T O T, the Transit Oriental, uh the Transit Large Tax. That at twenty tw- at twenty two, twenty nineteen, we were at two million, two hundred ninety three. And then it went down to uh one point two and now it's going up to one point nine. So so it's going in the right direction. Yeah, so so that is what we've seen uh that we have uh the hotels coming, it's coming along. So it's good, it's good sign to see that. And also, I'm 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 glad to see that, you know, from uh. From our cash balance and we at the almost a sixty million dollars, so that's pretty good.
Yes.
It keep going up, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, uh. Thank you very much, Felice.
Thank you, and and we'll just uh, we just need your approval on the changes for the mid-year appropriations.
Uh I will approve.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Felice, for the report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're good, Councilwoman?
Yep.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, um so let's see. Next is item twenty four. Uh Mister City, eh the city manager's consent calendar, items twenty five to twenty nine. Go ahead, Mister City Manager.
Good evening, I have item twenty five, amend an extended existing agreement between City of Hawthorne and John L Hunter and Associates. For consulting services for stormwater and sewer-related inspection and control program services. Item twenty six, amendment to contract for administering the COVID nineteen relief and economic recovery program. Item twenty seven, improve improvement and maintenance corporation agreement between the City of El Segundo and the City of Hawthorne. Item twenty eight, City of Hawthorne investment report for the court, for the quarter ending December thirty first, twenty twenty one. And last, I have item twenty nine, memorandum of understanding between community partner and the City of Hawthorne. Mister Mayor, that concludes the city manager's commit. Consent calendar?
Yeah.
I have a motion to approve items twenty five to twenty nine.
Yeah, I I made the motion, uh Councilwoman Valentine made the second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Uh Mister Mayor, uh I'm going to vote in all the items except the twenty nine. Because because it said something about nonprofit, so and you know that I, I'm in charge of several nonprofits in City of Hawthorne. So I'm not voting on that one.
What I'll do is I'll make the motion for all items except twenty nine?
Yep.
And uh Councilwoman Valentine, can you?
Second.
Alright, roll call vote once more, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
I make a motion on item twenty nine?
I actually have a question on that. I'll second it though, but I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So I understand that it's allocating uh the hundred fifty thousand dollars from fairing capital to uh fifty seven nonprofits. Is that correct, Mister City Manager?
No, um what I'm asking for direction on that, um staff have researched and we have uh fifty seven nonprofits registered in the City of Hawthorne. Uh we received a donation of a hundred and fifty K from our community partner. I'm seeking direction from council on disbursement and allocation of those funds. Uh in the staff report, I've made recommendations on setting criterias for those nonprofits for for funding. Or a short application, which with a council's approval, that we will send out to those nonprofits. To explain their community, community benefit in the city and what they're doing to help the city.
So you want to send her out a uh application for them to send back in? And based on how they score, even ones that pass a certain criteria will get money?
Absolutely, but what I would like to do is to bring that application back if I'm directed to create application. We'll bring that back at the next council meeting for approval, then we'll reach out to the nonprofits and see who's eligible to uh for that funding.
That sounds good, yeah, I'd like to, I'll provide that direction if you can bring us back a Sapa application for it's approved.
And and that's uh a hundred and thirty thousand, how much did we say?
Fifty thousand.
Hundred, hundred and fifty? A hundred and fifty thousand with amongst fifty seven applicants. A hundred and fifty thousand money, you know, it's it's not enough to be able to make an impact if you were spread it evenly, so.
Yeah, to the chair, Mayor?
Yeah, well, hold on, hold on real quick. And so I go ahead and concur with that idea. I'd like to take a look at the application and its criteria. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh I just had a concern with regards to the actual number of nonprofits. My concern is that um some have not even, in my opinion, been present. Let alone have uh been in Hawthorne uh providing a service. Uh they could call me to the carpet and tell me if 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 I, you know, if I'm wrong. Um however, we need to take a look at that list. Uh and then I think we need to still be able to reach out to some that might not be on that list. So that's a concern of mine, that not necessarily all of the nonprofits are captured in the fifty seven that's that's being. Um you know, the number that's being put out there. And then um if if it's supposed to be, you know, given out fairly. Um. It's it's gonna be a small amount, even at that.
Um what we can do, and I will bring it back to the next meeting, we can have a tier system on uh according to what their uh. Progress is in the community, how much they contribute to the community, and we can have three to four different amounts that we can have different buckets for what they do in the community. And just look at their their organization on what they've done lately in the community, what they're proposing to do. And just hold them accountable if we're gonna assist them with funding. Wait, I'm sorry, you're pro temp.
No, no, finish.
No, I was saying with that, we can have a better understanding with that study on uh how we would like to designate who's gonna receive money. Uh obviously, we have to make sure they're in compliance with their business license, obviously, and other compliance issues within the city.
I think we should also uh have a waiting system for, like, we should favor nonprofits that are doing certain work. Right, in the community that I think that maybe the council feels is something we specifically wanna wanna help support. So I'm sure nonprofits do great things, so I I don't know if there's any particular that we're, you know, we're looking to. To encourage or or we need greater support, but that's something kind of to consider also.
And can I just, can I just piggyback real quick on um?
Go ahead, go ahead.
On what you just made mention with regards to the nonprofits. Uh it's just not the nonprofits. Um there's been a number of businesses that have not received their renewal license, okay? A lot of them have submitted to uh your, their annual license that are due. And some of them have said that their checks haven't been cashed, some have said that they're still waiting for their license. So we need to make sure that we're taking care of our businesses just as much as our nonprofits. So it, and I know, I know you make mention, Vaughn, you're gonna take a look into that. But it's just important so that the viewing audience know, and especially the businesses in Hawthorne, we're all, we're we're working to get that fixed. And that's important. Um and that that's just because of the businesses that I frequent, and of course, they they come and they tell me what's going on. So rest assured that we're looking into that. And and if you are having, say, for instance, a lot of them, Vaughn, have said. That their check hasn't even been cashed and they have to go and write another check. We need to check on all of that and and or honor that. Honor what it is that they have currently in with us at licensing. But thanks.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move ahead with that, please. Uh roll call vote, roll call vote.
Okay, uh Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes, except for Councilwoman Member Montero, who did not vote.
I think it's an abstention, he has to abstain, doesn't he, as far as or recuse himself?
I I check it that that uh Councilman Montero is accusing himself for potential conflict of interest.
He can recuse himself, but doesn't have to leave the room because he's.
Yeah, because because this is not the ultimate decision, so this was just for 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 uh filing, so it's not, so.
He doesn't have to leave the room because it's not independent, like you just said.
Yeah.
And it's not a, it doesn't rise to the level, there's uncertainty, but it's not something.
Nobody talk, nobody said about him leaving the room.
Well, uh yeah, and and.
No, exactly, but.
Later on, whatever, I'll make a decision, maybe not to apply for for none of them.
Right.
Me, if you were to recuse yourself.
And then, you know, there's, there's also nonprofit organizations that have other o- office, uh officers. Uh manage their nonprofits for them due to conflicts, so just FYI.
City Attorney, go ahead, your consent calendar?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh I just have one item on the, on the city attorney consent calendar. It's a settlement of subrogation of claim. Of Geico Insurance Company for property damage arising from an auto accident. Uh property damage in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred dollars, eight hundred fourteen dollars and ninety two cents.
I make the motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
City council discussion action items? Uh not number thirty three, council study session Q and A regarding charter, direction on charter language.
Did, um Mister Mayor, would you prefer to do, take that item last, considering that it may take a little bit more time?
Let's move ahead on council, I'll take that recommendation, thirty four, Speed Hump, one eighteen Street and Inglewood Avenue, Montero?
Alright, so uh the reason that I brought this up is because I have several phone calls and text messages and emails. About people speeding on that street, uh one eighteen west between uh uh Inglewood and um. Sun Sundale. Uh and apparently, back then, uh when uh Arnold Sharks Batter used to be the public works. Um even uh Francis Dickless was still alive, they submit some petition. Uh to put some speed hump and it was never done. Uh so I want to see if I can give a directive so to put some speed bump only between uh Inglewood and and Sunnydale. So it's just basically um that's, it's like a block because people coming out of the uh. The Imperial going to one eighteen to skip traffic, especially during the 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 traffic uh the uh. Ha rush hour, and they speed over that that street and they have hit some cars there. So people are complaining, they said they cannot even stand on on their lawns, on the driveway, so et cetera, et cetera. So I I just wanted to see if we can give a directive to the public works to see what they can do over there, please.
There's no objections, go ahead, uh staff. Mayor Pro Tem Patterson, item thirty five, uh please.
Yeah, uh just uh in the interest of this whole cannabis um program going by. Uh expeditiously and transparently, I I would just want to suggest that, you know, any and all directives. To our consulting come from the city manager, city attorney, or one of the working committees. So I mean, essentially recruiting, you know, any individual staff person or council person to to unilaterally. Give them work or make requests or whatever the case might be, they should come through, you know, one of those three sources.
Can you repeat those sources again?
City manager, city attorney, or any of the standing uh cannabis working committees.
Was there any objections? Anybody have any thoughts? Okay, that stands, go ahead. Uh Councilmember Montero, item thirty six, please.
Okay, this is uh about, you know, returning in-person council meetings and even maybe for us to open city hall. Uh because you know how the county have um. Have decreased the restrictions about COVID. And the state and every, and the federal government, CDC, and the and Lake, LA County Health Department. They have put this so-called Los Angeles County Post-Surge Respawn Plan. So so they have a plan in place that now, as you see, they have lifted restriction indoors and outdoors. So so they have a plan in place that now, as you see, they have lifted restriction indoors and outdoors. Uh so I think maybe it's time for us to just to think about the site that uh starting our meetings in person. And if we want, we can put our own restrictions, we can say only vaccinated people or. Or a negative test in less than twenty-four hours can attend the meetings. Uh and I think because uh I think it's time for us to go back to normal business because. Even the school district are also not requiring a mask as of tomorrow. Are only volunteer, but you know, so it's people who will decide if they wanna use mask or not, so. I think it's time for us to think about uh reopen City Hall, and we can put our own restriction if we want about mask, about vaccination card, et cetera, et cetera.
I'd like to get a report on what those surrounding cities are doing. Um yeah, essentially, as far as council meetings.
But um in lieu of that, in 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 addition to that report, um the sh- should we have an ad hoc committee or just staff? Uh delegate this to the city manager and uh staff to develop this.
I think this staff should be able to.
But wh- what we do have, we have a COVID nineteen task force that meets regularly. Well, we can gain direction from uh that source, and I can have my office look into what surrounding cities are doing regarding City Hall being open and in-person council meetings.
And and Vaughn, please uh look at the Los Angeles County Post-Surge Respawn Plan they have uh released, okay?
I know in the city of Carson, we're still telecommuting, um you know, two of the of the four days a week. Um let employees have to, you know, go to come to work as well as telecommuting for the council meetings, so it's kind of FYI.
Yeah, because I have a lot of community people, you know, uh telling when when are we going to go back to the to normal, so um. We need to come up with a uh an answer. Thank you.
Alright, item thirty three, the Council Study Session Q and A Regarding Charter Direction on Draft Charter. We placed it here in this section because we did not have a a special meeting, so it's here. Go ahead, Steph.
Um Mister Mayor, we have uh Sir Davis Snow present for this item, uh from Mr. Watson Gresham. Um to for the purpose of the study and Q and A regarding charter and. And asking for directions for the draft charter language.
And Robert, would you like me to give a brief uh overview of the report or?
Sure, sure, why don't we, why don't we start with that?
Alright, uh thank you, Mayor Vargas, members of the City Council, um as you know, the council has been considering uh whether to embark. Uh on a uh preparation of a charter uh for the city of Hawthorne, um and the one of the steps was to. Uh develop the topics that might be of interest to be addressed in the charter. Um as uh summarized in the staff report, the topics that were raised include. Um establishing the broad authority over municipal affairs, and that would certainly achieve. Um one of the objectives about maximizing local control from a land use perspective. Um which is our second point, uh maximizing the local control over planning, general plans, civic plans, et cetera. Um there was interest in re- in looking at the uh the mayor's office and rotating that annually amongst the five elected council. Members or changing uh the current mayoral election process. There was interested in looking, interest in looking at um establishment of uh commission appointment processes. Um where either council members could appoint uh an individual commissioner. Uh or each uh commission appointee being approved by the majority of the city council members. Um or as uh a- another item was establishing a compensation structure for the mayor, city council, city clerk, and city treasurer. Um and that could be either in the form of maintaining the existing compensation structure that's under uh general law. Cities or establishing an alternate compensation structure as the council may desire. Um and maintaining the local prosecutorial functions and authority. In the staff report, uh we've provided a couple of uh examples on some of these topics uh to help frame this evening's conversations. Um and also in the staff report, there are some provisions that are some of the the more uh. General topics that would be included in the charter, such as the name, the the city's boundaries and o- and and other such things. So um I think with that, um I would open it up for uh conversations amongst the city council members. Again, we're looking. For uh any direction on these topics for uh what a charter that the council ultimately. Um would need to present to the voters for their approval um would contain, and of course, I'm here for for any questions as we go along.
Uh yeah, there's a couple of things that that would say that that definitely makes sense, uh being able to maintain our prosecutorial. Uh ability, um you know, general was a municipal affairs, um land use. Um um definitely having a very alternate way of of um setting compensation for the elected officials. Um and um. Um looking at how we appoint commissioners, something that definitely took my interest, so I think that um in many cities, each councilperson has an appointee. To different commis- commissions. I'm not sure what this specific rule is in Hawthorne, if that's, if that's how we currently do it, I I wasn't aware.
Uh uh okay, uh Councilmember Montero.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh be- before I go to 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 my uh items, I just want Mister Snow to. Uh clarify something, for example, the rotation of the mayor. If, let's say. The charter was put on the ballot and approved, that would not take effect until twenty twenty five, January twenty twenty five after. Mister Mayor complete his term, correct?
M- m- my recommendation would be in the charter, make it clear that it would only take effect after the current term has ex- has expired. So the full term would uh would be fulfilled.
Mm-hmm, correct. Okay, so yeah, so uh so I do agree, you know, that we need to take control. You know, have more local control because like we see, we got the uh Sacramento passing all these laws that affecting our zoning. Our land use, so I like that that idea, and I like the paragraph the way you. You summarize on page two of the staff report, so thank you for that language on uh declaration on A and B, that was very good. Um yeah, I would I would definitely say, you know, if if we go to that route to to. Eliminate the the mayor election and go to a rotation like Santa Monica or or Manhattan Beach. Is to do it after uh Mayor Vargas complete his four-year term that he was elected to, okay? Uh. The commissions and all the other, one of one thing that I'm not too in favor right now at this moment. For for the charter, uh for the for the, if we put on the election for November twenty second, is this uh salary for for council members. Uh because when I look at the budget, uh we have not increased enough revenues. In our general fund to justify to give uh council member salaries, okay? So I I I do tend to like so right now, the the general law compensation that we have in in the books. And then I think January twenty twenty-three is gonna go up from six hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month, right? So uh maybe if the charter was passed, maybe down the road, maybe after. Uh maybe twenty twenty-five, maybe to make an amendment per se uh for for salaries or compensation. When we see much more robust economy, more robust uh revenues coming to the city. Cause I want, I want us to, like I said, to diversify our economy in the city of Hawthorne, to bring more revenues, to see more sales tax, to see more T O T tax. Uh and and to create, you know, technologies, uh business, and and more opportunities to. For our citizens and also for our staff before we can give ourselves uh salaries, so. But I agree in all the other, all the other provisions. Thank you.
Councilmember Valentine?
Uh thank you, Mayor. So um I agree with the um. With the concept of maintain maximizing maximizing local local control. Over land use and planning, including general plans, specific plans, zoning and housing. So whatever whatever provisions we draw should maximize local control. I do not agree with rotating the office of the mayor. Um I don't see any advantage to that, um I think that uh we benefit from a strong mayor. Um and um I I like to see, um I like to see that. Division between the council and mayor. I think we benefit from a strong mayor. I don't want to see um. Uh a a weak a weak mayor where where it's just a rotation and just, the mayor just really becomes another council member, actually. Um the uh. I like the provision, I loo- I like the provision of each commission appointee. Of being approved by a majority of the city council members as opposed to uh commission, a a commission appointee. Being approved by each council member, so I don't, I I like. The idea of the entire council having to approve the commission appointees. Um I agree with Mister Mon- uh with Councilmember Montero that uh compensation should be. Um limited, I I my recommendation was that it be maintained at the at at the um general law. Uh the as as compensation for general law cities, which is which is what it is now. Um so I would say I agree with that, and I agree with maintaining the local prosecutor functions and authority. Um so that would um that those would, if we if we went to a charter system, um that would, those would be my recommendations.
Councilwoman English?
Uh thank you. Um. What's up, oh Mister Snow, thank you, thank you for the presentation and um detailed information. Um I actually like the fact that the council would be able to select a commission member. And um be able to make a recommendation. I think that's important. It shows um, you know, a diverse uh pool of selection. From all of us, more importantly, it provides for a transparent way of uh assuring that there's um. A a fair process so that there's opportunities for many, not just a few, so that's important. Um I like the um. The established board authority over municipal affairs, I think that's important. I think also the local control is important. Um I also think that a rotation mayor is uh something that might be beneficial and could help us. Um there's great ideas among uh all council members, some are doing more than others. And have shown that in their years of service, and others, you know, questionable. The other thing I like is um. The local prosecutor fun- functions and authority, I think that's important, and with regards to um. Compensation, this, the council has not, in my time or even previous years that I could remember, even during my city clerk years. Have not given themselves any raises for years, years in comparison to cities that have actually bypassed Hawthorne altogether. Um that's an opportunity, right? An opportunity, again, uh we use our own vehicles, we use our own gas, we use. Uh we have to service our cars, nobody pays for, you know, the miles, if you say, everything that we're doing, um so. Um if there's that opportunity, I don't see a problem with it, however, they feel that. This might be something that needs to be looked at while um in our in our budget. That we we could do that too. Um these are, these are, these are things that have never been discussed among the council. This is this is first, and this is in twenty twenty-two, and I can remember back in two thousand and five, they wouldn't even have it. But take a look at Inglewood, take a look at other surrounding cities, Carson, look at Long Beach, look at other cities, and um. I think it's important that um we be just as valued as any other city that's um prospering, and I think that's important. I think we need to come out of the box, we need to be open-minded to change, and those changes sometimes could be beneficial. And more importantly, I think the people are of Hawthorne here are tired of, you know, same old same old and things not being done. And I think it's time that we uh step it up, and uh I think this might be something, a route we might need to look at to to make those changes happen.
Okay, so so what do we have so far? Um let's just double check, so everybody's, Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Oh, just a comment on even the setting the compensation, I I I think that one thing that would be valuable to the city of Hawthorne is to make the. Position of councilperson and mayor a lot more attractive for people to pursue, so we can attract a lot. Uh more quality candidates, um you know, to this position. Uh I think that currently, the people that pursue it are either gonna be entrepreneurs, retired. Uh maybe school teachers, or a lot of lot of free time, it's just a very small amount of people. That have the twenty-plus hours per week to pers- you know, to to really donate to this particular position, I think that. Um you have an opportunity to really attract um more candidates, right? Uh more of our our quality community, community members to wanna get involved and help, you know, move the city forward.
Okay, uh Councilmember Valentine?
Yeah, I I wanna respond to that, um I think very quickly, um you know, providing compensation to the council can. Can spike the um the budget. Um we're not at a point where we can afford to s- to spike our budget like that. Because every time you pay compensation, you also have to pay benefits, so um and that would be. All of the council members, the city clerk, the city, the city treasurer, and the mayor. And so you're going to have a huge spike in in the amount of money that we would have to pay out, and that would only increase every year. I don't think we're at the point where we had, we're comfortable enough as a city, and we have to be able to 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 um. To be able to afford it. That's how some cities have gone bankrupt in the past, and I think we do- uh we don't wanna put ourselves. We don't wanna go back to the years where we had this structural deficit, if I I'm, I've been on the council long enough to remember when we had a structural deficit. Every year. We we didn't start getting um over that deficit until twenty fifteen. So up to that time, every year, we had a structural deficit, and it's not that hard to go back to those years again, and I don't want to go there. So I think we have to be very judicious about um about compensating ourselves. I think we need to get way. Past the amount of the 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 budget size that we have now before we talk about compensation, so I would not want to. I would not want to put that in a charter if we decided to go charter, I wouldn't wanna put that in the charter.
Okay. And what else? Okay, uh let's go ahead and summarize those uh comments. What do we have? Are those, is that the final decisions of our council member colleagues?
Do we wanna vote on each provision?
Yeah, that's why I was gonna recommend maybe uh we should go for each provision that was recommended and vote, yes, you know, uh. The majority would move on. And then, you know, see what's gonna stay, what's gonna be eliminated. Uh Mister City Attorney, your your advice, please.
Um hold on, so I'm sorry, so do we have a um consensus to go and. Vote on each other item? Is that what I just heard, or what are we? I'm sorry, I was I was just jotting notes here.
That works for me, we can vote on each of those items that were presented.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then I basically I stack.
Okay. So can we take a vote to do that right now? Is that what we wanna do?
Uh if we wanna take a vote to, if we wanna, on the process of taking a vote on each item, we can do so.
Yeah.
Sure, I I move, I think my Mister Montero would second it. You wanna go, somebody lead the roll call vote?
A roll call, the Mister Doctor Paul Jimenez.
Uh the roll call, alright.
Yeah.
Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
So what's the first thing that we're gonna vote on?
Um give me one second, okay, so. Just wanna confirm that these are the categories. One is maintaining the prosecution uh as part of the city charter. Uh land use, municipal affair, getting maximum control, um the alternative compensation for council members. Um appointment of commissioners by each council member. Um is, and and I need. Um, is, and and I need clarification on that language. It's, is that? Is that a um?
How about this? We make that, that we will agree to determine. A alternate way of appointing commissioners, and that's yet to be determined though, but. And then we can go into detail about exactly what it is.
So currently, most of the commissioners are nominated by the mayor and it was voted on by the council. So is there a how the, how is it that?
I'd like to recommend that they, uh, each council person can nominate somebody, but it have to be ratified by the entire council.
Well, my, my, my suggestion would be that all the commissions should apply. And then, uh, the council will interview the candidate, and then the major, who got the majority of vote is nominated.
Why can't?
I don't want us, I don't want us to be, you know. I don't wanna, I I don't want each council to be appointing somebody then to go to the, and go to, so I would like to see. A process like we we already do, that they apply for the commission position. Uh, not, so and then the mayor is not the one who's going to select. And then we will decide as a council member by by majority of vote. That this is a good applicant and he goes, and he will be appointed the Silver Service Commission, for example.
Yeah, but the issue is that though, people come in, people come in individually. It's not like they all apply at the same time. We have to. Uh, will it down? So I mean, my suggestion is each council person gets to nominate, and still the council has to approve it.
Well, I wanna give the community opportunity to 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 be to 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 just apply for that, for that commission. I don't want us to just choose your friend or choose your neighbor.
Yeah, well, that's what's happening, that's what's happening.
Exactly. So that's what, that's what I want to eliminate. All that process, all, so what we, I want is, maybe it's like a job application. They apply. If they qualify, we vote on that candidate.
Yeah, there has to be a, a selection process that.
Exactly, so the city clerk can do.
That is appu- that is appu- uh, application approved.
Yeah, the the city clerk can can review those applications, for example, and 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 uh, with with a commi- with with a committee. And then.
Why would the city, why would the city clerk?
Because, because the city clerk is one going to receive the application.
That's all they're doing is receiving an file, and then we could get, we could get.
Or we can, and we can get all those.
Manager or somebody else.
Yeah, or we can get all those applicants like, like we did for the, for the cannabis program.
Right.
And decide.
But yeah, but they won't all come in at the same time is the problem. Be different if we got fifteen applications for. X Y Z commission, that makes sense to kind of review them all and vote on them. But oftentimes they'll come in, peace may or say there's a vacancy. So it becomes, it puts a, in a more difficult position just to tell somebody no. We have a vacancy, we're gonna tell somebody no. That they, you know, we wanna appoint them, so.
Well, uh.
You know, there, there has to be a, a group of people that are applying at the same time for that to make sense.
Yeah, I don't think each one of, uh, uh, each council should appoint anybody, so.
I'm not even saying appoint, I'm suggesting, uh.
Nominate.
Nominate. And then the council.
That's, that's my thing too. I wanna make sure that there's a, there's an equal. Playing field for everyone, for everybody on the council, yeah.
And then the council still has to vote on it. Look, look at the application. There should be an application, background process. Right, I think that's the case anyway.
Background check.
But, yeah, that person is to be nominated by a council person in the entire, then I mean, it has to be a majority rule in terms of, uh. Placing that person onto the commission.
That's fine.
Did you get it? Robert?
I did, but then we have two different methods.
We got two different, two different th- debate going on, yes.
So, um, I could.
I think the consensus of nominating and then the council, uh, each council person is nominating, the whole council has to vote on it.
Okay, that's fine. I'll go, I'll go along with that.
Okay.
That's, I don't wanna be stuck on that one.
Okay. So, okay, so then we have that appointment of commission, and then the last is the rotation of mayor. Or keep it the way it is with elected mayor. So. Uh, I guess we can start off with the prosecution and and both first.
Barbara, can I give a suggestion? Can we go in order as the bullets on the staff report?
Sure.
Thank you.
I thought we've already done most of them.
No.
Okay.
So the, the first one was establish broad authority over municipal affairs. I thought I heard general concurrence, uh, that that would be included. That's kind of the core of a.
Yeah.
Charter.
Yes, you got five votes on that one.
Okay, that's a concurrent, unless you guys wanna do a physical vote on that one.
Physical vote.
So physical vote on all of them, according to the mayor.
Yeah.
Mister, Doctor Jimenez?
Alright.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayce English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Number two, reservation of maximum authority for municipal affairs, land use matters.
So roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call, go ahead.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayce English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes, city council voting yes.
And so the third is, uh, rotate the office of mayor annually among five elected city council members. Change the current mayor election process.
So when you say change the mayor election process, that's in the rotation, correct?
Yes, so, um, as we have it right now, is the mayor is a elected position.
Right.
This will be rotating position.
Right.
Roll call vote.
It would be five, five council members and then in a process for rotating. Annually, I assume for the, the mayor role position amongst the council members.
Thank you, Mister Snow.
And Mister Snow, that we don't wanna put that, uh, uh, that will start. Uh, after the mayor complete his term, or that is later on.
That, that would be my recommendation, um.
Yeah.
If, if, if it's the direction to, to change that, that would be my recommendation to include that. And there is some template language that, that would cover that.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I'm ready.
Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Montero?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayce English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
No.
And Mayor Vargas?
No.
The vote reflects city council members Montero and Rayce English. And Mayor Protem Patterson voting yes, and Councilmember Valentine and Mayor Vargas voting no. Next item?
So this is to establish, uh, commission appointment process whereby each council member appoints a commissioner. And the, um, the, it's, it's approved by the majority vote of the city council members.
Roll call? Roll call vote, please. Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayce English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Up, up, abstain.
Okay. The vote reflects city council, council voting yes, and Mayor Vargas abstaining.
Okay, and then next is establish compensation structure for mayor, city council, city clerk, and city treasurer. Um, a, a structure that is, um, establish an alternate compensation structure. Without specify, I guess we would have to later on go into what kind of structure you would want. But as worded right now, it would be to establish a compensation structure that is. Other than what's established for general law cities.
And, and just perhaps bef- before there's a, a vote on this one, I, at, at some point relatively quickly. We would need direction on what type of compensation structure. Um, is envisioned so that we can start drafting that, cause again, our, our next step will be drafting the charter. Getting the language, uh, the actual language in place for what the council, uh, is interested in presenting to the voters. Uh, bringing that back for council, uh, kind of review, and then ultimately public hearings. So we, we will need, need some further clarification if there's interest in moving in an alternate direction, what that direction should be.
What do other cities do? Do they set a number, or do they have it like a formula?
Well, so for example, in, in the report, there's, um, there is. A, a number, so the city of Carson, for example, has a number, they, they set a number. It was based on. Um, a lower income household, uh, at the time that charter was adopted. It was a set number. Um, and so that, that was a number that was es- established. There could be a more general provision that just basically says the city council has the authority to set its salary from time to time. Um, there is a process, um, I believe it was in the city of San Jose, that there was a commission. It's a mu- a much more. Complicated, uh, structure. So there, there are various structures that are available. Um, uh, and again, we would need some direction on what the council envisions. It could be just broad, the, the council has the authority to set. That, um, and just one other thing to, to keep in mind on this compensation and really any of the, of the provisions of the charter. When this goes to the voters, um, the compensation, if the council has the ability to set its own compensation, that's something that would have to be. Um, included in the ballot measure language, um, to make it clear to the voters if that's the ramifications. So I think that's something to, to think about. Um, cause at the end of the day, um, if the council's moving forward with the charter, uh, obviously. The, the hope would be that the voters would, would approve that.
Yeah, that's a definitely, if, if there's a majority that wants to do that, that's definitely a. Complicated next step in identifying what that, what that would look like.
So for now, so for now, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mister Snow, can, um, you made mention earlier that, um, there are some cities that just basically indicated that, um. That, uh, the, the general law cities, not general law, you said, um. That some of the cities just basically put one, one sentence that says would, would select the, the salary, right? You said something to the effect of. The councils.
Yeah, I think the, the council would reserve the authority to set its, to set salaries, yes. I think you could do that. I think. I think that pre- I would just caution that that may present some issues with an, an open ended provision like that.
I agree.
Ultimately.
But can you, can you amend like language that would say, um, something to the effect of, um. Through council approval? In other words, it would still be an item that would be, have to be brought to the council, right?
Yes, it, it, it would, that's, that's correct, but the council would have the authority. To do that without any, um, without a, a charter framework setup. And I think that's why most. Cities that have gone in this direction have looked for some sort of framework in order to, uh, to establish what the salaries would be. And, and many, in many frankly, just, uh, cite the, the general law. Um, formula, which I understand it sounds like is not, is not the direction this council wants to move in. But that is, uh, also a very common, uh, approach.
Uh, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, um, let's say, for example, if, if the charter passed. And, and then later on. It could be amended for us to include this compensation down later down the road, correct?
Would have to be put on the ballot to amend it.
Correct, that would have to go back.
That specific item would be put on.
That particular thing has to go back on the ballot. Okay, so now let me ask you these, these kind of question, uh, Mister Snow. If per se, that we would stay. As a currently, as a general law cities on, on that stiping, like that's going to start twelve hundred dollars in January twenty twenty three. Is there possibility to say? That each year, we would, the council would get, uh. An adjustment per se, like say, if it's, um, I forgot the, the term, like that's it.
Cost of living?
Cost of living, thank you.
CPI.
Yeah, CPI. If we would say that, that, and, and that every year would got the CPI increase instead of a salary. On that stiping.
Um, I, I think that, that you could do that, and you could, you, so I think the concept you're saying is it would be one of the. One of the published indexes that, that, you know, state what it is, and it moves up that amount, uh, each year, and that would be the cap and. Step forth in the, in the charter, um, and then just figure out, and I assume the starting point would be the existing. The existing salary, we'd have to establish what the starting point was, but I think that that would be. Uh, I think that would be, uh, an acceptable approach. We could certainly do, you know, if that's the direction of the council, we can run that to ground to make sure there aren't any issues. I don't, I don't see any. Uh, at this point.
Because, because like, like I said from the beginning, at this point. I would not vote for, for salary, for compensation. I, I would like for us to stay with that stiping as, as a general law city that, that, that we decide. Few months ago to increase it to twelve hundred dollar as a January twenty twenty three. But with, with, with a language that we will get that CPI every year.
Yeah, there's language in here that says a cost of living to not exceed five percent per year.
Correct.
But currently, we, we, exactly, I'm sorry to interrupt, we, we get to, we have to do it by ordinance, though, but it's five percent every year.
Right, so what I'm saying is if we already approved, if we already approved of twelve or thirteen hundred, it could be that amount plus five percent. Cost of living. So we start at the number that we already did, then what's, what's the issue?
That's what it currently is.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Alright, so I'm clear.
You got that?
Clear.
Mister Kim?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I just wanna clarify that.
Who are you to vote? Do we wanna be able to choose?
Yeah, we have to vote.
Well, I, I just wanna make sure the wording of this vote is that, um, you could make it, cause the, the government code. For general law cities allows the council to vote an increase of five percent each year. But that goes into effect after, you know, after there's a general election, and then the incumbents come in. So January first, so you could put in the provision that, um, you could vote for a provision, the compensation. Um, with, if you don't wanna set a formula, like some of the city, I think Torrance has it like this, that. Uh, allows, uh, that the maximum allowed under the government code for general law cities, basically. So that would automatically give five percent increase every, uh, per year.
Okay.
Yeah, bec- because what I'm saying is that if we go, if we go to the, to, cause you can ask to vote about salaries, uh. Then, you know, I would not vote for that. I would say no if we were going to give ourselves a salary. I'll say no. But if it's the language is on that general law city plus the CPI, then I'll vote yes on that.
So I mean, that's another, I think that's the next vote. If, let's say, there's a currents to set our salaries, the next vote would be, how will we set it?
Correct, yeah, so, so it's.
Or how will we set our, and salaries, I don't think is a really relevant word, which is how would, how would we determine the compensation?
Okay. Okay, vote call then.
So this is, this is a vote on going by salaries for. Um, same as general law cities, except adjustment for CPI.
No, 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 this is a vote of, do we wanna choose to determine the compensation method? Do we wanna include that? Then we have to do another conversation about what that compensation method is gonna be.
Okay, so we're gonna have to have another meeting to discuss and then have a vote on that?
Well, no, we not, not a meeting, but we can.
I would just.
Another conversation. Just another conversation.
Yeah, so Mister Kim, I would just say vote with the understanding that there is a consensus, from what I understand. That the cost of living expense, uh, uh, cost of living, uh, the cost of living CP. CPI to not exceed five percent, and it starts from the salaries that we've already agreed to.
Well, actually, the mayor Protem had called for a vote on his item, so.
I mean, my suggestion is first do a vote of, we're gonna agree to set the salaries, then we do a vote of how we're gonna set the salaries, or compensation or stiping, however you wanna word it.
Yeah, but that's what we're doing.
So first is just saying, yes or no, do we wanna have the charter included?
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, yes.
I'll second your motion, uh, Mayor Protem. So let's vote on that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need to repeat on that. What exactly are we voting on?
So we're voting, do we wanna ha- include in the charter the ability to set, determine how we. Set our compensation. So currently, it's whatever the general law says we're voting on, do we have the ability to. Determine something different. Then we're gonna have another conversation about what we're gonna determine to be that process, or what that numbers wanna be.
So the first vote is whether or not we are, we have, we have the ability to make our own determination about what the.
So the first vote is whether or not we are, we have, we have the ability to make our own determination about what the compensation is.
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead. So restate your uh, restate your motion, Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, I'll be, I guess we vote on if we wanna have the ability to determine what our compensation is.
Second.
Roll call? Councilmember Montero?
I'm voting no for the compensation salary for compensation.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
No.
And Mayor Vargas?
No.
The vote reflects mayor and city council member, uh, Montero and Mayor Councilmember Valentine voting no. And Mayor Cho Pro Tem Patterson and Councilmember Ray English voting yes.
So the agreement is there'll be no change to how it currently is.
So so uh, Mister Kim, so so now, what I want is, is we can put a language there. So to avoid all these jingles down the road, that basically uh, the council. Will stay uh, for the stipings as 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 a general law city compensation with the caveat that. Automatically five percent every, uh, not just achieve five percent increase on, based on the CPI.
You just voted that we won't be able to to make.
No, that was not.
What was the vote? Uh, uh, Mister Kim, that was the vote. You just voted no that we don't wanna determine.
We don't wanna salary because.
Okay, and that's what that's.
Okay, that's Mister Kim explaining.
My understanding was, we just took a vote and there was three noes. For councils to have the ability to decide what this compensation will be.
And now you're just bringing up a decision of compensation.
So if that's the case, it stays that way. So no compensation, it'll be on the, on the, on the chart, on the chart.
If 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 I.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Snow.
My interpretation of that is that the charter would include a clause that basically says. We, compensation is the same as under general law, the same as it is today. If that wants to be amended in the future, then certainly you could do that, but that way the 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 compensation question is answered. And it is answered that there is no change as a result of the charter.
Exactly. Thank you, Mister Snow. That's exactly what I wanted. Thank you very much.
Mister Snow, can you, can you explain how the CPI will work now moving forward? Does that need to be uh, noted today, tonight?
Um, it would be under the same exact procedures as the general law, because basically the charter would say we will continue to follow the. The procedures under the general law for compensation, and so it would be the ordinance and taking effect. Um, a- after an election, so the 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 standard process would still be available uh, after the charter as well.
So there's no change. Recommendation is no change. So let's move forward. What's the next item?
So um, uh, that I think the last. I think the last in the recommended motion is alternatively, the city council could direct staff to not prepare a draft charter. So do we, we will have, we can take a final vote. On whether we wanna go forward with the charter at this point, or.
Uh, Councilmember Ray English brought up the fact that I don't think we voted on the pros- prosecution part.
Yeah, we haven't.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That maintain local prosecution functions and authority?
Yes, so can we take a vote on that?
Roll call? Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Uh, ab- abstain?
The vote reflects uh, city council voting yes and Mayor Vargas abstaining. Mister Kim, did you say there was a final vote?
Yes, final vote is again, whether the city council, based on what's been. Conducted today, whether you wanna go forward with putting these charter provisions on the ballot. For November of twenty twenty two.
And before with the roll call?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
No.
And Mayor Vargas?
No.
Okay, the vote reflects mayor and council member Valentine voting no. And council member Montero, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson and Councilmember Ray English voting yes.
So what happens next?
Did I hear you say mayor? And I didn't hear you.
I said no.
It was two no, three yes.
Uh, two noes and three yeses.
I just didn't hear the mayor. I didn't hear you say mayor.
Yeah, I said no.
So based on those votes, I think um, Mister Snow has directions for. Uh, the law from a rich was in Gersh- Gershon to start proceeding with the drafting of the charter. Um, Mister Snow, can you explain the, what what the s- the procedure will be in the future?
Sure, so the the next step with this direction from the council was, we will actually prepare a a draft charter. I imagine we'll bring that back for council consideration. Um, in comment. Uh, ultimately, we will need a final charter uh, drafted. We'll need to con- consider. Uh, the California Environmental Act, uh, and Environmental Quality Act ramifications of that. Um, and have a sequoia determination, and then there will be two hearings uh, that will need to be held uh, by the council. And then finally, after those hearings, uh, the council will make a formal decision to place that uh, before the voters. All of that needs to be wrapped up before Oc- um, August twelfth in order to have sufficient time. To get that um, on the ballot for this coming November. Um, we would hope to to get this done earlier than that. Uh, and uh, and get it uh, over uh, to the registrar of voters for consideration by the voters.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, can you go back? What was the vote on rotating the office of mayor?
Three, two.
Yeah, it was three to two.
To rotate or not rotate?
To rotate.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I think we're done, right?
Alright, so uh.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Snow and um.
Gentlemen, um, ladies and gentlemen, uh. Thank you, thank you guys for your reports.
Thank you, Mister Snow. Thank you, Kim. Mister Robert.
My pleasure.
Alright, guys, um, so uh, we're at the end of the meeting. It's late. Uh. I'm gonna just go ahead and just give, uh, well, actually, let's just kinda go real quickly, guys. Um. There's not a lot of activities. It's still coronavirus situation. Um, so I don't know what else you guys gotta talk about, but alright, let's uh. Let's uh, have our city treasurer.
Maybe he's gone.
Uh, don't think he's on, Mister Mayor.
Mister City Clerk?
Okay, uh, just a few things. Uh, again, thank you everyone for watching from home. Uh, first of all, happy International Women's Day. I wanna thank. All the hardworking women like my wife, uh, sister and mother, who have provided leadership to organizations and their families. Uh, next, uh, we met, I asking for your help. Uh, next, we met with the county clerk representatives to discuss the vote centers for June and November. Election, the win- the June and November elections. We still need locations in the Holly Park area and the Moneta Gardens slash Bontra Park area. So if anyone has a contact with a location that is minimum of eighteen hundred square feet, that would be interested in hosting a voting location, please contact me. Um, I believe it pays about, the minimum is three hundred dollars a day. Uh, my email's P Jimenez at cityofhawthorne.org. Uh, lastly, we're able to provide produce to about three hundred families at our food drive on Saturday. Uh, I wanna thank the volunteers from Win LA Youth Integrity and Math and Science Academy. Uh, we'll be in front of city hall. Uh, this Saturday from ten AM to twelve PM, providing produce and registrar, uh, registering uh, voters. Uh, that's all my end. Uh, good night, everybody.
Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, again, um, good meeting. Thank you for all the callers to express their opinions. And thank you for all the head department that give us presentation tonight, you know, from Alan Lou, from the Public Works, from Feliz. Um, and from the planning department, Mister Greg McLean and 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 the consultant, outstanding job on the housing element. Appreciator of depth. Uh, to uh, Von for the uh, for the report you gave us, the update. Uh, on on activities in the city hall and to Mister Kim for all the um. All these uh, legal issues from charter cities to the legal competition, so thank you very much. Um, again, just people of Hawthorne is going to decide. If we, if if they want us to go from the general law cities to the charter cities, because like, like we said. It, we need to take control of our local government because Sacramento has been imposed a lot of these laws on us. Uh, preventing us from uh, from uh, zoning and from land use, you know, giving us all these EDUs and. And parking, uh, burning density, all these things that does not make sense to us here at Hawthorne. So. And and it's time for us, because again, also the reason that I vote yes to put on the rotation of the mayor. Is because if you look at the history of the city, the mayors have not been kinda like outstanding citizens. So, uh, and and I'm not talking about Mister White, because Mister Whites have not done nothing wrong. But we, you know, but so we have not have a strong mayor in this city. And we need, we need a strong voice and we, all five of us, uh, combined, you know, we have the same vote. So so I think it would be best for us just to rotate. It would be a better situation, but again, this, the people of Hawthorne will decide that in November. Uh, I just wanna uh, keep mentioning that uh, the Hawthorne Historical Society is gonna have a um. Pancake breakfast on April second from eight AM to eleven thirty uh, AM. So. April second, Saturday, April second, uh, at the Jim Thorpe Park, right at the uh, uh, museum. And also just keep in mind that the other day is coming up. Hawthorne, we're going to celebrate on uh, April nine. It's a Saturday from ten to two PM. So uh, and again, I wanna thank everybody, because it's a great meeting, you know, from the city clerk. To everybody, so outstanding job and good night. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Angie Ray English?
Uh, thank you so much. Um, just wanna also wish every, every woman a happy. National um, Women's Day to my sisters in Idaho, all five of you, four of you, and then. All my other forty nieces and nephews, or I should say nieces. Thank you, um, mayor, and also, um. I visited a, 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 a shelter today, not a shelter, I'm sorry, I visited um. An organization today, and I know we're limited on time. I'll bring that up um, in the next, and I'll probably ask them to come and present. Um. Can I just ask the city manager to please bring um, our purchasing policy to the next council meeting for discussion and recommendation to include. Local preference or local buy. And then um, other than that, I think that should do it. It's late. Thank you, everybody participating. Thank you to all staff. Did a good job today. Good, good council meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Valentine?
Thank you. Um, I'm certain we're all aware of the Hawthorne Arts Complex and how a huge warehouse off El Segundo was transformed. Into a beautiful art space center, at one time housing over ninety artists in their own separate galleries. Unfortunately, those artists have lost their leases and must vacate the space by the end of the month. I am putting out the call to, I'm gonna first direct staff to look into what buildings may be available. To provide this information to the manager and to find out whether there is any grant funding available to assist them. I'm also reaching out into the Hawthorne community to ask any building owners if they have space that would accommodate seventy-five artists. We don't want to lose that art community in Hawthorne, if at all possible. Um, I want to announce about the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, our General Assembly. Will be held on March twenty-fourth at the Juanita Millander McDonald Community Center in Carson. Um, the theme this year is Back to the Future, Reimagining the South Bay. Um, there are going to be two panels, Community of Innovation and Aerospace and Defense. The event is free and in person and um, and lunches, uh, and breakfast and lunch are served, but you must register. And you go to southbaycities.org. That's March twenty-fourth. Okay, I wanna talk a little bit about cannabis. I attended the Cannabis Town Hall meetings on February twenty-sixth and March third. In both cases, the consultants provided good background information as to the statutory and regulatory framework of cannabis. There was also good information provided as to the various cannabis businesses, which are available depending on what the city decides to approve. The purpose of the town halls, as I understand it, is to educate the community on what is allowed. What cannabis businesses look like and to get the feedback from the community as to what is desired by the residents of the city. At the first meeting on February twenty-sixth, there were seventeen people present. At the second one on March third, there were six people in attendance. Based on this, it appears that the outreach effort has been inadequate. And we certainly did not learn the opinion of a large percentage of the public. I would like that to change. I would like for um. Staff to look into this and see what can be in, done to improve attendance at the next two town hall meetings. I'm sorry, I'm, I was speaking.
I apologize. I thought it was muted.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman.
Uh, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you to staff. Thank you to all of you who participated tonight and and who brought us all of this great information. Thank you to staff. Thank you, Von. Thank you, uh, Robert Kim, for your, your great information as well and your research.
Thank you, man.
Thank you all and good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, so, so Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Montero, I did call on you already, right?
Yeah, so, but I just wanna say thank you to South Bay Workforce, uh, Web, South Bay Web to send us the quarterly report. It was a beautiful report. So thank you, South Bay Web.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, now you have uh, the floor uninterrupted. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thanks uh, to uh, my council colleagues for, you know, productive meeting. I wanna thank staff. Uh, for your hard work. I wanna thank the community for logging in, watching, uh, taking note, uh, um. Um, and you know, making your voices heard. Definitely appreciate that. I want the team to ask you to do so. Just a couple of things that I took some notes on, I wanna bring up. I got a complaint from a vendor. Uh, saying that his ten ninety-nine was mailed out. Like, I don't know, a month after the legal deadline. I don't know what that's about, but like, that's ridiculous. And it reminds me of, I think, a year ago, two years ago, we got our RW two late, then we got them corrected two months later. So I don't know who we're. I don't know if we're outsourcing this work to somebody or not, but like, we need to be on top of that type of stuff, tax stuff. Um, I went to the dentist the other day, uh, Hawthorne Boulevard, which is Snire Dental. Parked in the median, park, they're parking in the median of Hawthorne Boulevard, right? I swear, every time I leave out of that little median parking thing, I'm scared. I don't know. If anybody agrees with me, but like, there's a lot of blind spots in coming out of that median parking onto Hawthorne Boulevard. Um. I don't know, or I wanna ask if staff can look into that, you know, are my, are, is what I'm saying. You know, just me, or, you know, is there some, are those blind spots exist in trying to get, navigate your car out of those. Those parking um, median areas. And if so, what can we do um, to, to address that? Um. I saw on our billboard sign, um, advertising Hawthorne Business Help. And I just wanted to suggest maybe we should say Hawthorne Business Assistance as opposed to Hawthorne Business Help. Um, just a suggestion. I think that might read a little bit better. Um. You know, one of the benefits of working for another city, I kinda get some insights on how, you know, what happens over there. I know the city of Carson. Doesn't pay, they have fire through LA County Fire Department. Um, but they don't pay it out of their general fund. Um, and if we can have somebody look into. Have a little bit of information about what they do, but look into what they're doing and seeing if that's something that makes sense for the city of Hawthorne. Um. I also wanna recommend that we have an economic development committee of some sort, and this is what this committee would do. And we can put this on as a discussion action item if if the council would like, but what that committee would do is um, evaluate. Like regional opportunities that Hawthorne can participate in. So that'd be stuff like FIFA that's coming. Uh, the Olympics that's coming, obviously, Super Bowl that passed, things that bring in tourism, things that bring in a lot of dollars regionally. Uh, I think it'd be a great idea if we, we had a, uh, if we were proactive about. Proactive about identifying these opportunities and determining how we, as a city, wants, wanna participate. And take advantage of some of these dollars that are coming to the region. So just because these events aren't happening in the city of Hawthorne, doesn't mean that we can't. Benefit from them if they're happening right next door. So, uh, that's something I definitely talk about. I I wanna make sure that. You know, we have some eyes on these opportunities and be very proactive for some of them. This is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, okay, um, I'd like to thank all the residents for speaking, uh, expressing their minds. Um, I think we had a great meeting today, a lot of uh interesting topics. Um, I think we're doing a great job as a community, and I'm very proud to be your mayor. And I think the community knows that, so, um, I think there's gonna be some members of our, members of our community are gonna disagree with Councilmember Montero and his comments. Um, maybe he's concerned about other people, he says he's not concerned about me, but the proof is in the pudding. The proof is in the pudding. We balanced our budgets economically, we're sound. We're just moving into the twenty-first uh, twenty-first century when it comes to with some of our developments. Uh, finding other sources of revenue and taking it to another limit, uh, another level here as a community, so. Um, I think the voters will speak very clearly with regards to um some of the comments that were made today. And that's fine, everybody gets to express themselves. Um, I know that the per, one of the persons driving. One of the specific items on the uh, for the charter city ran against me for mayor. Unfortunately, they didn't win. So, could this possibly be an opportunity to uh put something on the ballot to uh sneak. A uh, an opportunity for them to achieve the mayorship? Possibly, um, but, um, that's fine. Uh, the, all my council member colleagues. Have a manner in which they would like to express themselves, operate, and that's fine. Uh, but uh, I'm proud of you, your mayor. The proof is in the pudding. We've come a long way. And uh, despite any comments that were made today, I am, uh, I think we do have a great uh council here today. That has worked together to make good changes, and I think we'll continue to do that. Okay, so thank you once again, and have a great evening, and have a good night.